Here.
Feeney.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Okay, item number three. I look to adjourn the board review until June 16th at 5:00 PM.
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion by Feeney, second by Ermeline on the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item, public comments. Number one, Oliver Burrows, 5000 Sunset Avenue.
Hang on.
With reference to sidewalks on cul-de-sacs.
Mr. President?
Point of order.
Are we doing the flag?
Did I miss?
Oh, geez, sorry.
Forgot to call our board to order. Okay. Board of trustees will call Feeney to order. And please rise for the pledge.
Flight to the divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll call for the board trustees, Sharon.
Ermeline.
Aye.
Feeney.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Okay, now we'll go to public comments. Oliver, if you want to step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Oliver Burrows, 5000 Sunset Street, Schofield, Weston, Kelly, take your pick, Wisconsin, 54476. With reference to item 41 Alpha to be discussed under new business, I had the privilege of addressing Chairman Feeney and the Public Works Committee last week regarding Sunset and Arrow Streets and the proposed sidewalks, courtesy of Mr. Wodelski. Sorry, my fault. We had certain pieces of information that were made public. There are 92 cul-de-sacs. According to the information that I understood at the last meeting, no new cul-de-sacs will be allowed unless there is some way of potentially expanding them in the future. Our cul-de-sac, as Michael pointed out last week, and it would be similar in length for Arrow Street, approximately 350 feet. And in the interest of being non-political, I only say once that I call them the sidewalks to nowhere because at this juncture, they go down each side of the cul-de-sac, which has seven houses per cul-de-sac. And the amount of use that they will get is minimal. Now, it was pointed out at the Public Works Committee meeting, and I've done some research, but unfortunately, with all due respect to Chairman Feeney, I only practice law, I'm not a lawyer. The bottom line is, I haven't been able to determine any reason, no disrespect to you, Mr. Administrator, that it would require necessarily a public hearing to propose a variance, nor when I look back at the ordinance, that I think it would be difficult to amend the ordinance. Because according to the ordinance in place right now for all new or reconstruction sidewalks are required. The difficulty that these sidewalks propose is not the 1,400 feet, 350 times four, but the idea of the necessity when they are not conduits. There's no outage, if you will, path through to Ross Avenue, and there are no sidewalks there. Now, I haven't had time, Michael, to look at all 92 cul-de-sacs, and I apologize. But I think that ours are somewhat unique in that they're shorter than some. I believe there was one Public Works Committee member who had a longer cul-de-sac, Mr. Chairman, as I recall, it was discussed. From what I've been able to discern, and again, I only practice law and not one, there is not any requirement, federal or state grant related, which we were fairly certain there wasn't, that we have them, nor might have for that matter. Because when you look at the plan, as I've understood, Michael, so if I'm wrong, Michael just bunted me, the bottom line is, we've got 13 feet of blacktop, then two feet of concrete, and the driveway is a seven-foot apron, which covers the swales that will be reinstalled, some of us kept ours. And then we have the sidewalk, which takes us 13 plus two is 15, plus seven is 22, plus five is 27 feet. Now, I know that we are charged $7.70 a square foot, allowing me to prove relevance. I'm simply saying, if we took that figure and multiplied it times the footage of the sidewalk, five feet times 1,400 times 770, and I'm not saying that's the same price, Mr. Administrator, Public Works Director, I'm just using that number, that's the only number I've got. And you can take a look at the savings that could be achieved. We only have 14 houses, there is no expansion, and I would argue respectfully to this board that this is not something that by amending the ordinance is going to open you to a deluge of problems going down the line when these other areas are called for resurfacing or replacement of roads. I will not say I talked to all 14 neighbors, and I'm here representing them. I've talked to a couple, one of whom spoke at a previous hearing and supported me, some others who said yes, but I'm speaking on behalf of where I think we can save money for three reasons. One, we're not defeating the purpose, as the Administrator very aptly and articulately, carefully articulated his position in vis a vis the present ordinance. We're not going to be changing the nature of how we're looking forward in our infrastructure, as the Chairman pointed out. Two, we're looking at cul-de-sacs that are roughly, and I say roughly, 62.5% of a normal block length, if my measuring is right. And third of all, at a time when, as I have learned, the county is looking at a $5 million shortfall, I, as an employee of the Wasco School District, have been told, we're looking at a $2.5 million Wasco School District shortfall. Every dollar that we may be able to save, without defeating the purposes of ordinances, of aesthetics, I believe it would be possible for this board to amend this project, amend the ordinance, without requiring a public hearing, and without defeating the underlying purpose for which it was created, I believe in 2016. I was also told, and I believe it was by Michael, if I'm wrong, just bunted me, the bottom line is, sidewalks are toward the end of the project. If my calculations are right, based on looking at the $95,000 figure that I saw somewhere within the materials that we received, this should not make a significant enough impact on the project, that it should require any rebidding. And I would respectfully request, given that data, and I'm trying to be brief, as the President knows, that's difficult for me, I think we can accomplish this task, save a small amount of money, without undermining the intense of the ordinance before. So I thank you very much for allowing me to come in and address in purpose, in person, and I'm only a minute 37 seconds long.
All right. Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you. Our question's under 43.
Yeah, well, it'll be addressed later in the chat.
Okay, all right.
So, and I believe Steve Cronin, you wanted to make a public comment also? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Cronin. My wife resides at 5402 Hewitt Ave, Village Weston, 54476. I'm standing here tonight because my wife and I, Janessa, are the concession operators at the Weston Aquatic Center. The aquatic center is a great asset to our community, provides community members an affordable and safe way to have some fun and cool off on hot summer days. This is especially true during times of economic hardship like the country's experiencing now. I understand there are some concerns regarding opening, and I'd like to share my input. We think the aquatic center can open with some restrictions put in place. As of this morning, every major resort in the Wisconsin Dells has announced plans to reopen, some as early as next week, and some as late as June 15th. We feel that if we can follow the groundwork being laid by resorts in the self-proclaimed water park capital of the world, an hour and a half away, we can open the aquatic center safely as well. I have reviewed all of their plans, all of the plans first and foremost state, and I quote, "On March 13th, CDC stated there is no evidence that COVID-19 can be spread to humans through the use of pools and hot tubs. Proper operation, maintenance and disinfection with chlorine or bromine of pools and hot tubs should remove or inactivate the virus that causes COVID-19." Some of the plans call for reducing capacity by 50%, some of them do not. All of them call for continuing to practice social distancing and refrain from gathering in groups larger than 10, but they don't place capacity limits on the pools themselves. Their plans also call for more frequent cleaning of locker rooms, chairs, and loungers, but do not call for more frequent cleaning of water play structures or slide handrails. The plans also outline the need for social distancing while online for slides, and they plan to accomplish this with over markings. I've also reviewed the Marathon County guidelines, and they look to mimic what the resorts in the Dells are doing. Please bear in mind that today is May 18th. A lot can and will change between now and when the aquatic center opens. There may not need to be restrictions in place by that time, we do not know. I've also followed news stories in the local media, and the vast majority of comments are in favor of opening up local aquatic centers. While many summer events have canceled, there is much less risk when talking about a few hundred people versus thousands that attend some of the large summer events. We would like to see the board direct staff to move forward with the mid-June opening with the following restrictions in place. 50% capacity for the aquatic center, increased cleaning of commonly used surfaces, limiting large groups to 10 or less, and promoting social distance throughout the facility by use of signage. We would be willing to work with Sean and the rest of the staff to help get the facility ready to open. These restrictions could be reviewed again before opening to see if any of them can be relaxed. Additionally, my wife, Janessa, and I are reviewing restaurant guidelines, and will implement our own best practices as well in order to open the concession stand safely. We have to remember that this is a very fluid situation, and we have to be flexible. Please take this into consideration when discussing the aquatic center tonight. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody that's joined the meeting through Zoom that would like to make any public comments? Let's go one more time, is there anybody that is participating in the meeting electronically through Zoom that would like to make any public comments?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Penton, 5002 Arrow Street.
Hey, Jim, okay, go ahead.
I'm sort of not sure if now is the correct time. I believe it would be more appropriate when the board is actually meeting on the agenda item later in the, probably under new business, start with the parkland dedication, I mentioned our repair, proposed site. What's the guidance on that?
Item 44.
Yeah, it's on item 44. If you want to stay on, if you want to stay on the line, we can, we can allow some discussion during that, okay?
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else that wishes to make any comments? Okay, now we'll go on to item number seven, approval of the board meetings from May 4th.
Second.
Motion by Maloney, second by Ziegler on the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Reports committee for minutes from boards committees and commissions, CDA has not met, Police Commission, I do not have any minutes for, Exeter Tzonei hasn't met, number 11, The only one that has many minutes is, is the Plan Commission. So look to acknowledge for item 15.
Move to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion by White, second by Feeney on the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The only other item on, for committees and commissions is Safer, and we met last Wednesday at Safer Commission. And I said, you know, previously, because we don't get the meetings, the minutes until probably, you know, a while down the road after they approved. But for those that are on both Safer and Joint Finance, we said we would basically provide a synopsis. So, share a little bit about the Safer Board meeting we had. Very frustrating, actually. Couple, several issues came to mind. We had, one of the issues was appointment of commissioners, and it's a very lengthy discussion involved, and basically that's been put off to the next meeting. There was some input from attorneys for Safer that said how this should go, and it wasn't the direction that the, that our partners on the Safer Board wanted to go. They basically came up with a different conclusion. So that's been put off until the next meeting to address appointment of the fire commissioners, the two from Weston, and two from Ramon, and the third one, or any other one, which is at large. The other issue that came up is, we, there was discussion on there regarding contracts, the outlined contracts that they use for fire, and EMS contracts. So, the one fire contract that was on there, the other EMS contracts, they basically talked about framework and structure, no contracts have been signed, but they'll be sending out a framework for what the contract should be based on, a percentage increase and a length of term that they choose. So, we'll get back to that information. But one of the things, the fire contract was on there, and one of the Safer Fire, one of the Safer Fire Board members represents the Town of Marathon, and that was one of the contracts that was put on there. Town of Marathon is about the same size as the Town of Weston, and I know Mark and I had some concerns with the Town of Weston being charged $10,000 more than the Town of Marathon.
Actually, it's 8,700 for the Town of Marathon, 27,000 for the Town of Weston, but then there's a contribution from the Town of Marathon that they pay another 8,000 that we weren't aware of. So it gets it closer to the 10,000, you know, 17 being the two joint, but still, the Town of Weston is $10,000 more greater.
Yeah, which I found it very troubling why we're not consistent on what these prices are. We've got two, you know, comparable communities in size, and I also felt, probably should have recused himself from the discussion on this since he represents Town Marathon, and that wasn't done. Very divided board, I would say, and I have, I have some significant concerns, and I think on a June meeting, we'll probably have something on the agenda specifically, so we can discuss some of those concerns as a board on how and what we should be moving forward with Safer. Mark, I don't think you have anything to add.
I want to echo Wally, and I, I, I remember some of the things that other trustees have said, some of their frustrations. I haven't heard a lot of it, but I could feel the tone when I would hear some of that, some of those concerns. I got to tell you, if this is supposed to be a partnership, Wednesday night was not a partnership. It was probably one of the worst meetings I've ever attended, ever. And I've been in some wild ones, usually because of me. And, but it, it was not a partnership, I even brought that up, that it was not a partnership, that we didn't feel like a partnership. I had several phone calls after the meeting the next two days about how we used to walk around with the big bat, and now they have control. And I, I believe that third member will never vote in Weston's favor. And it's, it was very, you know, I was thinking of Lauren, actually, during that meeting, because you would have brought that point up immediately on Re-Cruising Themselves.
I, excuse me, I was there, but when I saw that there were, I left because there was a quorum present, so I left.
Well, it, Lauren, I'll tell you, you missed something. You know, I, if I would have known that, I almost wondered if you should have stayed, and I mean, I know you were there too, but the start of the meeting, I can't describe it any more than an ambush. And it was really disheartening to, to think that three members had pre-talked about that. I'm not accusing anything, I'm not saying anything publicly, but, but I'm telling you, it was a really frustrating meeting. And I, I tried to, to keep it, the tone down, but I was asking some pretty deliberate questions. One was on some correspondence between the attorney to seven other people. And it was stated in the beginning that only Wally got this, this, this email, and...
A legal opinion on how to proceed forward based on contract for the fire commissioners.
That was actually talked about at the prior meeting in February, that it was going to be brought down from Dietrich and Vanderwoe. And so this legal opinion came, addressed to seven people, including Administrator Donner. And Administrator Donner was online, but he was not in attendance. And I, during the meeting, I kind of thought to myself, I'll text him quick to see if he had received that, and he acknowledged he did. So then I, I kind of got a little backbone at the end of the meeting, and I was addressing all the people that were supposed to have gotten that email, including their administrator, including the chief, Fire Chief. And some of the responses I got were just amazing. The Fire Chief said, I didn't say either way, I got it. But in the, in the beginning, it was very, very pointed, especially of Mr. Sparks, on him going to the attorney by himself. And that's not what happened. They said they were going to get back to us, and they did. They went, they went to seven different members of that Safer Board, the two administrators and the Fire Chief. And it was, it was just really disappointing to think that we're partners in this, and I certainly didn't feel it, I don't feel it today, so I think there's going to be more to come on this.
And after getting ambushed, I read the minutes from the previous meeting stating the attorney said, we had a joint meeting with Fire Commission, Safer Board, and Dean Dietrich came in and go over the contract and how this should be done, and he said, I will be issuing a follow, I will issue a legal opinion on how to proceed. He did that, and, well, it will be on the June agenda, and we will address this a little more in depth then, on what our, the village's position should be from the board.
So, Wally, could I ask a question?
Sure.
On that, so during that meeting, I know there was a suggestion of Administrator Roden and myself getting together, getting together with Richard Downey from Cronin Water? Is that, that meeting has actually been set up for tomorrow?
I would, I would say we should go through that.
So, okay, just want to confirm that.
I guess we're talking about contracts and just, you know, participating as sharing services, talking, getting to know each other a little bit more. I, I think the more we can do that, always, you know, so I would stay on course with that.
So that's scheduled for tomorrow, then?
That's fine, yeah.
I guess then with respect to some of the discussion about the, the costs of service provision and whatnot, I'm not sure how much, if any, Matt and Josh or the Safer staff, I guess, has been working with the finance staff from either community. I know they work with their fiscal agent, but is that something maybe that they, that we should be maybe giving some assistance on, at least reviewing before, put out there for the public?
That's one of, that's one of the big concerns. Obviously, we just went through last year paying $644,000 off in a deficit for Safer between the two communities, and we have been trying to get this budget in order. And at the meeting, the budget numbers, they couldn't give me any numbers, they couldn't even tell me if there was a surplus or deficit from last year, and basically blamed the accounting, saying, well, they made some mistakes, or they got to fix this, or they got to fix that. So, I have no idea if we're, if we're on track for budget, if they're over again, because we can't get answers. And so, yeah, great concerns. And when I looked at, through the finance agenda for tonight, you know, from what Jessica put together, they borrowed for the first two quarters, so there's only 37% budget left for the remainder of the year, which they should be well under that. So, as she said, it's supposed to be paid back in the third and fourth quarter, so we're back into the same history of what we've done in the past, is fronting that money because they don't have money in their budget.
The Deputy Chief said that you can run these numbers seven different ways and get seven different results. I don't think that's how math works. It was not my strong subject, but I don't think that's how that works.
I definitely disagree with that comment. I've asked over the last year, for several years in the budget, so we could see past performance. I've never seen a budget, strictly on current. I've never seen a budget without comparison years. I've never seen one here, never in any business I've ever been in. I've asked it countless amount of times, and the answer we got Wednesday night was oops. Then I got a call the next day scolding me for asking those kind of questions in a public forum. And I go, I don't know what I'm supposed to ask these questions. This is the only time I have here. I don't, we don't have full sessions, we, they don't come to our meetings, I can't ask these questions. And I have made several attempts to make some phone calls to, Josh will answer my calls, but Matt won't. So, I'm just really concerned with where this is going, I really am. And I probably should have listened more to someone else that was on Safer, and anyway, I just think we should talk about it, I agree.
So, it will be on the next agenda. I simply don't trust where we're getting out, because if, for meetings, the numbers change.
Didn't we, one more, didn't we not also put in $100,000 into payment this year for payroll? Wasn't payroll borrowed?
We can ask, is Jess on?
Jess, are you on?
Yes, I'm online.
Yep. Jessica, did we not borrow into this year from last year for payroll? Wasn't there an issue there with payroll, about $100,000? Do you remember that, in the first part of the year, December?
I do not think we prepaid this year, I think, we paid our first quarter, I believe, in January.
Okay.
And we got notified that the invoice that they gave us for the second quarter was incorrect. That's why we have an overage. When you look at the budget status report, it looks like we're over 100% paid.
Okay. All right, we can look at that.
And that's, that's one of my questions, but I'll hold it off for your report under, under Finance, Jessica.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and this is just, we said we would get feedback from the meetings, that's your feedback, and specifically agenda this and talk about Safer in a little broader term at the next meeting. All right. So no other reports. So move on to item number 24, reports, Administrator Keith.
In my report, I had given some links to some guidance that was still out there from the WEDC relative to public facilities and entertainment facilities, like with respect to the governors, or the overturn of the, it was actually the Health Services Secretary Appointees Order, which is what the ruling was based on, overturning that. Anyway, of course, our discussion about possibly, or what we may do with the aquatic center is related to this, and what we may want to do with that for this, for this summer. I guess, based on that order, we have referred any questions from businesses to talk to Marathon County Health Department. We did issue a press release just to indicate that we were maintaining our, right now, a closure, limited access here to the municipal facility. I guess, having thought a little bit more about what to do, and I wanted to get some more perspective from some of the employees, because there are a number of employees that have relatives or family members who would be in the susceptible category, I guess, to be infected. So I, I guess I was wondering, the board has any issue with kind of extending our closure, maybe through the, at least through, through Memorial Day, as we kind of get our ducks in a row, and how we want to, maybe put some additional protocols in place here? I think we could do a better job with some of the cleaning, maybe more frequent cleaning of the bathroom, understand how that's all going to get done. We are going to have the carpets cleaned at the end of the month here. The cleaning actually would be something that would be eligible for reimbursement under this FEMA. A reimbursement, I guess, once we submit on that, but there's no deadline right now on some middle of expenses under that, under that FEMA emergency or disaster relief, as has been provided for. Not that I am a advocate of spending my grandchildren's money, if you will, but there are some things that we have incurred here, and maybe we can do some things a little bit better. I know we have talked about also putting in place the, like the ticket counters, so we can reduce traffic to our counter. I think that would be a good thing for us to try to shoot for, if we can, and then I prefer to maybe have people still just schedule appointments by phone, and, you know, we can maybe open up to have meetings in person, but to kind of limit the walk-in traffic, I think would be a good thing if we can do that. It just depends on perhaps your perspectives on that as well, so I don't know if you want to have any discussion about that right now, if you think we should just reopen right away. I guess I'm inclined to want to just assess where we are yet, and get, make sure we have some things in place. I guess among that, maybe making sure we have the right PPE, more, maybe more hand sanitizers for everybody in their offices and things like that. And I think we had some shortage of that when we first started our, first started the situation and got ready for elections, and we're just getting done with, you know, with the second election of this, of this year already, so. I guess my, my main thoughts, I guess, related to that order at this point, we'll talk about the aquatic center under Sean's report.
Lauren?
I don't see that, it's 15 days until the end of Memorial Day, and I, two weeks, one way or the other, I don't think it's going to make a lot of difference. I think it gives an opportunity for Mr. Donner and staff to make a plan for coming back and being open to the public. So I don't see a big problem delay. Granted, the governor's original order would have expired May 26th, is that correct?
Memorial Day's the 25th, next Tuesday.
Tuesday. So, I think we need to be a little cautious here. Granted, we're not having big parties and people are shoulder to shoulder here.
My workplace just extended its stay-at-home order through September 1st, so... So, like Trustee White said, I don't think that two weeks will make much of a difference, but perhaps by the end of June and take it by a month-by-month basis so that we can evaluate using the latest data. I just saw that we, we had a spike of over 300 cases this weekend, so I think that we should stay closed at least through June and continue operating as we have been.
Well, yeah, I'm kind of in the category of as we're opening up things, it's probably more important to have the sanitizers than, and keeping distance because there's going to be more people that are going to come down with it, let's face it. When you're now out there socializing and going to bars and whatnot all, you probably got to use more care than what we did before. I, myself, I'm probably thinking very, you know, seriously about whether I'm going to be going out as much as I have been, just because there's going to be more people out there now carrying it. And I just, at this point, don't want to do that to my family.
John?
But, you know, as you look around how we're seated and stationed right here and you look at the three have masks, the rest of us don't. I wore a mask the last time. Thought it was too dirty to wear it this time, so I didn't get it washed. But, I don't know that we can open up the meetings and keep this six-foot distance very easily. We're pretty full right now with the amount of people that we have in here. We've got extra cameramen, couple of village residents. We probably could plop two other ones out there and have our six feet and we'd, and we'd be full. So, I, I think we're going to be limiting the amount of people that attend these meetings for, for quite some time, depending on how things, things opened up or what we're told we have to do. But I would be in support of letting staff figure out, all right, the next, over the next two weeks, what, what can we do? What can we have open? Because the more we can get out there offered to our, to our taxpayers so they can come in and communicate that, the better off it'll be.
So, right now, are they doorbellingly to get in or appointment only?
Be by appointment only, or phone call, you know, phone conversation.
I guess I don't mind that. I, I think staff should be back. I, I, I think so. I mean, if we're going to keep this enclosed and appointment only, I think staff should get into the ritual of being back, having the PPE here for them. I, I, I mean, we're doing it in our company. We didn't have many home though. I mean, we were essential. I mean, grocery stores certainly didn't, Walmart certainly didn't. I mean, I, I go to places all week long and in the weekends. I'm just amazed at how many people are out, along with, I'm sure, staff. I'm sure staff here is up, you know, out and about. I, you know, I know they're working at home, but you, you got to go get food. You know, somebody's got to do it. Somebody, I mean, somebody's walking in the Ace Hardware, the parking lot's packed. Target's packed, Menards is packed, Walmart's packed, Home Depot's packed, all, all these places for shrubs and stuff. I, I just think the distancing is important. I had the phone call with Keith and I know we're going to kind of take some time to look at this, but I feel the skate park should be open. I, I agree that the bathrooms, we won't be able to sanitize them, so we don't open them up. But I, I think the park should open. I think people are gonna, they're, they're responsible. I think they're going to take it upon themselves to do how they feel, however they feel about this. But, um, we, we got to get some of this stuff open. That, that's my opinion. That's, that's what I think. So, I mean, we can say this and safeguard everything, but yet, somebody's in those lines at McDonald's and Culvers and in all these stores. I mean, my gosh, I just couldn't believe it. I mean, Yonkey's bookstore opened up this last week. I was down there, their entire staff quit. It's just a brother and a sister running the thing. And they are so far behind yet they're extremely busy. I went down there, I did do a lot of puzzles and their whole wall of puzzles was almost empty. I couldn't believe it. But, we got to start bringing up. That's, that's just what I think. I mean, how many does Marathon County have right now?
How many cases?
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? Yeah. Okay. So, where, where's the 300 cases name?
Uh, statewide.
Okay, so statewide. So, primarily, I mean, it's Milwaukee. Oakley's a, a big button.
Brown County.
Brown County with that meat locker and then Madison.
Brown County's just cracked into the top 10 by percent.
Probably is, yeah. That meat plant was wicked. But meat plants across the country, South Dakota, North Dakota, Iowa, everywhere, they, they're huddled close and they, I, I'm certainly not attacking them, but they, there was no precautions. And people weren't, they were coming to work sick because they were so afraid to lose their jobs. And, and that's a shame, shouldn't have. But now they're, they're reopening with Safer, Safer areas and stuff and you got to get that going, so.
And my comments are, I think, getting through the Memorial Day holiday and then having time to make sure you sanitize stuff, provide whatever we need for PPE for staff. I think employees should start coming back to work unless they have, and I think we have, you know, probably one issue where there might be an underlying condition that needs to be remote.
Right.
But for the most part, we should be getting a little back to normal. I'm okay if we limit the amount of people in, but we should be open for business. Businesses are, government shouldn't set a separate standard for themselves than what the other people have to deal with. And I guess the last point is, you know, we've all followed the news. It's been, this, all this has been is every day, it's, it's heavy doses of this virus, the pandemic, COVID, this, COVID that. People have to make your own decisions. We live in a free country. They should be able to go. People are going to, to places. They're going to stores. They should be able to go out to the parks, you know, we'll discuss the water park and some of those, you know, in the agenda. But, people know what you need to do. You know how to sanitize, you know how to get to social distance, that's how you keep yourselves safe. For those people that are, you know, elderly or have underlying conditions, they have to take extra precautions. But for us as a local government to try and dictate what people should or shouldn't do, I don't agree with that. You know, when, when the, when the cure, by shutting everything down, becomes worse than what the disease is and a lot of people are hurting, losing their jobs, and there are people that are in such bad shape. Is it bad? Yeah. Have we had viruses and stuff before? Yes, we have. But I just don't think we belong to, that, that it's our job as a village board to try and dictate what people should or shouldn't do. We make best decisions, get the information out there and let them make deformed decisions. If they want to go out to a park with their kids, then they're making that decision, you know? And one size fit, one size fits all from the state or even the country doesn't work. This is a different area, which is why we don't have as many cases. If you live in Milwaukee and live in Dane County, there's different factors at play. You know, the law is that people can go out and, but they have to, and I trust our residents that are going to make informed decisions and, and do what's best for them. You cannot protect everyone from themselves. Through 33 years in law enforcement, I can tell you, you can't protect people from themselves. You can only address, you know, the stupid things people do, but we have rights. People have the ability, you know, they've, they've got freedoms and we shouldn't limit that to the extent that we're telling people what they specifically can and can't do. Keith, so, does that, is everyone, basically, if we go, get through Memorial Day, give Keith time to clean, get PPE and address any staff that has particular issues that may or may not be able to, to work, is that sufficient for the board?
I would agree with one caveat, that I think the clerk's office would need to be moved around a little bit. And I, I think the good job that Nate has done moving, you know, getting people at home and all the different things, I'm sure there's, you know, with, with this possibly being somewhat closed a bit, there are some offices that we can move some people around, I would think, for, at least for a while.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an option.
And everybody's, everybody's level of anxiety is different.
Well, that's, that's what I guess we need to point out. If I was up to me, I guess I'd do it differently too, but.
We got to listen to them. So, if, if, if some are more concerned, we've got some in our company too and, and we're listening to them, you know? Because, you know, I was, when I was at Yonkey, my wife and I and the brother and sister that owned the place, none of us had masks on. And a woman happened to walk in, saw all four of us without a mask on and absolutely couldn't believe it and says, I, I can't be in here without you guys have a mask on. Well, that, that was her level. And, and this is our, you know, this is everyone else's level and I, but we have to listen. You know, what they say is just as important as somebody else that, that may not want to wear it or do that, but the PPE is really big.
Yeah. Maybe just a couple follow-up counts? So, I did provide in hard copy today, I think I also emailed it to the Marathon County COVID order, COVID-19 order number one, which is, I, I guess I didn't realize this was out already before the weekend, but it essentially seems to be just an advisory order and not really an order. I guess, it's, it's advice or recommendations. So, we'll talk about this relative to the Aquatic Center, but I guess with respect to the parks, I did talk with Minister Olson from Rothschild earlier today. They were going to be talking about some of this stuff tonight as well. They're, they have a special meeting on their Aquatic Center, but I guess unless Park Director Osterbrink disagrees, I think we should just open our playgrounds and let people participate at their own risk, I guess. It's their choice, as we said.
Do we have to open the bathrooms? Is that?
No, I don't think we need to open the bathrooms. I would recommend not opening the bathrooms, but the playgrounds, the playground equipment and the shelters, I don't think we'd want to open also.
Well, the shelters have been open.
They're open here.
For rental?
We're not, we haven't been taking any reservations just due to obviously the previous order in place, that there was no gatherings of 10 people or more and most of our park shelter rentals, you know, or more than that. And then we have possibly the previously closed back plan, so we hadn't taken reservations, but we could start taking reservations now. We still do have one scheduled at the end of this month, March or May, May 31st. And we do have a handful of reservations in June, July and August. We did receive another cancellation today. A lot of people are just canceling on their own. I mean, we haven't contacted anybody to cancel theirs. They've just chosen on their own or we had one we scheduled in June to August. But, I mean, as far as park reservations, I think we have half a dozen on books right now or typically we would have 40, 50.
And I've been seeing those credits on the vouchers, I know what you all have and seeing us going back, whether it be the pool or the park.
Yeah, so that was one of the reasons we stopped taking reservations because if they're just going to be issued refunds, it's obviously costing money to do that. So, if we just held off until we're allowed to, you know, it's a process, we can open back up.
Trustee Sean, are you on, still on the line? Ian?
Yes, I'm still on here. I'm just unmuted. I, I guess I did, I was waiting for people, for everyone to kind of voice their opinion before I say anything else. I, I, you know, I, I guess, you know, in regards to opening, you know, opening it back up, I, I, I really am, you know, really just basing my opinion off the recommendation from staff. As we mentioned earlier, during this whole pandemic, we felt that staff knows what's best, you know? And if Keith feels even to wait until after the memorial day and we could, then we could readdress this again, I, I would be supportive of his, of his, obviously with, of his suggestion as well. As, and I guess the next part is, I have a question directly for Keith is, I know that he mentioned that he wanted to purchase more PPE equipment here. I guess the question is, are, you know, especially this kind of time period, it seems like purchasing those type of equipment is pretty difficult to do. Would that be by, obviously by the end of Memorial Day, would that be something that's possible to be done or are you, or would you think we would need more time for that?
I think that's something I'd want to find out tomorrow. I, I guess, I'm just, just observing, going to some of the local, like QuickTrip, for instance. You go to the checkout counter and there was boxes of individual bottles of hand sanitizer. I think when this whole thing started, it was a little bit short in supply, but I have the impression that it's maybe more available, but we'll check into that.
Yeah.
And then also, we were checking into that ticket booth idea for the, for having a walk-up bill pay capability rather than having people come into the office. That's another thing we can follow up on, I guess. So, there's, those are a few things like that that I'd like to check into. And again, the carpets won't be cleaned until last weekend in May, but there's some other things that too we would, we would attempt to do. I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit, I have mixed feelings about the mask thing because I think in some, it's not recommended really unless you have, you're, you're showing some kind of symptoms, I believe, is what my understanding of the recommendations are.
It actually is, I prevent passing on any germs to you. Whatever you cough in my face, I'm done. But they say it might help, so.
Right. There's some local distilleries too that are creating, I mean, if you go into grocery stores now, you actually think it's vodka, but it's actually hand sanitizer. And there's a lot of grocery stores that are selling it. It's a little bit, not the gel, it's a little bit more liquid, but it certainly is, it's, I think it's actually a little bit more pure.
It is. It's a little stronger.
That's what I'm hearing.
Normal hand sanitizers are 60% alcohol.
This is, is how much?
Normal hand sanitizers are 60%. The stuff that they're selling is 80 and.
And higher, yeah.
Fortunately, they add something to it that makes you sicker than a dog if you drink it.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. It probably doesn't help putting it in the vodka bottle, yeah. So, but we're, we're able to get a lot of PPE now.
Yeah.
A couple, a month or so ago, we couldn't get any, so.
I guess the only other comment too is that in the Marathon County order and it's, and it's in some other, some of the other guidance documents is that there's not necessarily a recommendation on a maximum gathering size. It's kind of discretionary right now, so, you know, tonight, I guess, you know, we're a little bit over the 10, but I don't think we're packed in there to.
I think the six-foot doesn't, kind of.
Yeah.
I know you're doing square footage, but the six-foot rule is, is pretty, you know, and all the big grocery stores, Menards, it's six-foot rule, you know?
You also have somebody at the front. We're talking about the municipal center itself right now. So, okay, I think you've got enough for that and then when we get to the parks and recreation discussions, we'll continue and there's some other things that'll be brought into that. All right. Any other questions in Keith before we move on? Lauren?
Are you looking for definitive action from the board or are you just taking consensus of the comments that you were hearing?
Well, I'm hearing that you're okay with us evaluating this and then we'd like to look at reopening on the 26th.
At least getting past that, I think is what, I think we all kind of, I mean, you got to, it's almost, it is very fluid, like John said, it takes, it's day by day. And I, I think it's, you're going to have to have some staff meetings and talk. I, I think, I personally think some should come back to work. I think if the doors are shut for a while and personally bill paying, I mean, they could, you know, put a stamp on it too.
Right. And they have been using intercity state bank for.
Right. That's right.
Paying water bills or utility bills.
It's a drop-off box.
Or the drop.
I use that.
Or online options. So, I think people have been trying to, have been using those more so than they have in the past, so.
Yeah, but I'm not so much worried about the bill paying stuff because that's simple enough. But I, but for the people who have questions and need to talk to staff on, on certain issues that they're dealing with, you know, that's important, that we interact with them. So, but like I say, we can control how many people can come in and it's not like you just have to have an open door. I, I'm okay if it's, you know, it's a buzzer, it's a, you know, we're here to see type of deal, so somebody's prepared and put a mask on ahead of time if they want, that's fine.
Okay. I think I have enough. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item 21, Clerks, Sherry.
I had a report attached. If you have any questions, I have the election statistics in there. Really good turnout we had.
Okay. Any questions for Sherry? Not, Finance, Jess, still there?
Yes, attached here are going to see the April budget status reports and then Jennifer prepared a nice summary for all that.
Thank you.
So, Jess, my questions on, on this is.
Oh, that's not till item 30, but I'll answer it. I dropped the gun.
Okay. On the Safer Capital, Wally, it's his budget for this year is 88,455 and actual is 319,631.
So, we did amend the budget. Remember that, but the time that we adopted our budget, we did not have final Safer numbers because it was not decided until January or February because we didn't have that quorum before year end. So, we were going to update our budget after we approved the borrowing. So, that's why the CIP looks a little funny. The only thing that's approved in the CIP funds is what was approved last year and hadn't been spent yet.
Okay. And then for public safety, and I assume that is probably correlates to the additional Safer expenses there, the fact that we only have 39% left out of the budget.
You're talking about the CIP?
I'm, I'm talking about the overall appropriation area for the general fund, public safety. Budget's 3.7 million and change. Budget's three point seven million and change, and we spent two point three already, leaving only thirty-nine point one percent left.
Well, that is because we paid a hundred percent of our safer already, and that's what I said before, they gave us the wrong invoice for second quarter, so we basically doubled up. We're gonna apply the nine thousand dollars that is surplus in the safer line. We're gonna move that over to the CIP once we get that figured out.
Okay. Okay, those are my only questions.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Jess? Okay, Fire EMS, nobody's here, no report. Twenty-four Parks and Recreation, Aquatic Center, season planning. Here we go again. I know Mr. Cronin provide a lot of staff about, stats about what the other water parks are doing. I also was, I sit on one of the church council boards, and all the area churches opened up, most of them opened up effective yesterday, and they're doing a twenty-five percent of capacity to start. And I believe the Archdiocese for Wisconsin also followed that, even in Milwaukee, starting at twenty-five percent of capacity. So they collectively got together, at least all the local church leaders here, and the Archdiocese on behalf of the Catholic churches. So that's where they're at. You know, for me, when I look at what are we doing, you know, for the water park, to me, that's a starting point. I mean, you know, there's a big difference between indoor, outdoor. We've already, you've already talked about the issues within a pool, where it's really not, you're gonna transmit with the chlorine and the bromine that basically kills the virus. I tend to agree with the statements Mr. Cronin made. I think if we're gonna open this, first of all, the pool, it's not, we don't make money off it. We know this is a service we provide to the residents, and it's, it costs money to provide that service. But if we're gonna take all the trouble to open this up, to open it up for only just a handful of residents versus open it up for at least half, I think our capacity at the pool is what, Sean?
Eight sixty-seven.
So about four hundred and thirty people is what we could fit in there at that fifty percent rate. So most are in the pool, it's outdoors. I read through the stuff from Marathon County, you know, on what they're even recommending for the pools and the social distancing, and, you know, no family groups together of more than ten, and having people at least remind them, monitor, and put enough signs. I think if we went through some of those, some of the protocols are listed in there, and, you know, put the signage in there, and obviously there'd be some extra cleaning and stuff on the interior and the showers and the locker rooms. I hate to see kids not be able to use the pool over the summer. You know, and the other aspect is, you know, everybody's talking about these stats and how many people have this, this virus. But the one stat, the stat that's probably the most telling, the most people that are using a water park are kids, you know, zero eighteen, and basically the mortality rate for kids on this is effectively almost zero. It's not impacting, you know, our school-aged children, which are the people who are probably gonna take the most advantage of the pool. And I, you know, you can't look at a one-size-fits-all. It's outdoors, it's in the water, and I think those factors really come into play as far as how you make that decision. You can't just say, okay, we, you know, indoors is different, outdoors is different, outdoors in a pool is, is even different. And I think people have been educated enough, because if, unless they were, you know, living under a rock, this has been front center on every newscast. So all the concerns, all the, everything is out there for people to make decisions, and if people aren't comfortable taking their kids to the water park, then don't, you know. I got an email last week after the, the farmer's market opened, and she said, well, I drove by the farmer's market, and people weren't all wearing masks, and I didn't see social distancing, so I didn't stop. And I responded, okay. I said, you followed your decision, you made what you felt was the best decision in the interest of you and your family. I says, I says, good for you, I have no, no to say. I said, that's what you should do. And I think that's what everybody else should do when it comes to the pool and going out to the parks and using playground equipment. People have to make their own decision. If it's kids, the parents make those decisions with all the information they got. And I don't think that we've got any more information than what the general public has, because everything we're having here is out there in the public forum, and it's getting blasted on everybody in every news cycle. People have to make their own decisions, and I don't want to deprive the kids of being able to get out on a eighty-some degree day in the middle of summer and go to the pool and splash around and have fun. That's just my thoughts, and I'd like to hear from everybody else. Nate?
The last I saw, those about, under the age of twenty-five, I think, are about twenty to twenty-five percent of cases, including asymptomatic. So I have some strong concerns about, about those in their teens who may be asymptomatic somehow, spreading that around. Also, in the packet that was passed out, it said that a lifeguard while serving as a lifeguard may not perform duties of the attendant or be given additional duties. Sean, how many extra lifeguards would we, lifeguards or staff would we need in order to completely sanitize the pool?
Well, it's actually not lifeguards, it's staff. So, because lifeguards cannot be used in a little room.
Right.
Right, okay.
Right. If we could, I mean, we could use the lifeguards in that pool, but they wouldn't be lifeguarding.
At that time.
Right, right.
So that would be during the regular downs?
No, I'm saying we would have additional staff on hand at all times for the social monitoring and for the kind of social distancing and cleaning, extra cleaning in place.
And then I, and then a lot of public health experts are saying that there's going to be a second wave, and I'm really concerned to that, that that may break out. If it follows the example of the Spanish flu, which is the model that, that's been touted quite often, the next wave is going to be even deadlier. So I think that we should, I think that we should come back in a couple weeks and see what some of the new public health debt is. I agree, we can't make everyone's decisions for them, but we should, I don't think that we have to decide immediately tonight.
Every one of the models that's been touted has been so far off, it's ridiculous. They've all been wrong. I don't, I don't have any confidence in these models, and the people who put all this up are the people that you were talking about, these public health experts, and they've all been wrong. They've been wrong in the other countries, too. It's been, it's been over-exaggerated by millions of deaths, and where we'd be at this point, and they know we're close. I have no confidence in, in the models that they're using, and that's, if you're watching the news, you're seeing that too, that none of these models have been correct. Lauren?
Barb was first.
Well, I guess, I mean, I do have some concern about, you know, opening it and amount of staff we need for cleaning it, but I guess my biggest concern is the fact that you said, well, the pool doesn't make money. Well, it did, it does make money some years. Some years, there is a small loss, but not a huge loss. And I'm looking at this and going, what is this going to cost the village? The amount we're gonna lose on this is going to be substantial. And we're also going to be losing on our room tax, because let's face it, there, the occupancy is down a lot. So the revenue from that is going to be dropping, and part of the pool uses that money to operate. So I don't know how we can open this up and take the type of loss that we're going to get for a small amount of people for maybe, what, six weeks? About?
Well, if we open up, if we open up in early June, then we've got at least three months.
Well, they closed about mid-August, something like that?
It just, the closing date was, I think, Sunday, August twenty-fourth, which is a week before Memorial, early Memorial Day every day.
It's roughly three months.
Right. It's, this year, this year was a, actually a seventy, seventy-nine day season, based on opening on June sixth and closing on the twenty-fourth. And if we, and we moved it to July first, it reduces it down to a fifty-four day season, which was, yeah, fifty-four.
But I just don't know how we can, the, the cost of it is, is to me, I just.
Yeah, we already know there's gonna be budget challenges this year.
And this is something we can, we don't have to.
There's, there's a lot of extra.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That we didn't anticipate.
But this is something that I, I guess I just, I know the kids wanna go swimming, and they wanna do this, and I, that's what the pool is there for, but at this point in time, I think there are other things that are far more important.
Okay, Lauren?
I just had a question for Sean. If, say, we decide at fifty percent capacity, would you foresee someone, as at the grocery store, I don't really notice it, but have somebody counting every time someone comes in, and they have one at the exit counting, to maintain their capacity. Would you anticipate doing that, having someone, only one door for an entrance and one door for an exit? Or would you also have a, a reader board out front, at capacity now, come back later? Because I could tell you this much, if you come, if you have a carload of kids come, and they're jumping like crazy to wanna get in the pool, and all of a sudden they see closed, they're gonna have, you're gonna have minor riots on your hands without notification.
Right, and, and we've dealt with that before. We've reached capacity of eight sixty-seven. We've had a thousand people in the facility, you know, because they say that basically only a third of the year people are actually in the water, so the pool itself has eight sixty-seven capacity. But the fenced-in area, we always allow a thousand people, and we've had lines of a hundred, a hundred and fifty people out in the park not waiting because they, because it was extremely hot, and they still wanted to swim. And Nate, maybe you'll to attest to this, I mean, he, as he guarded at, at the Aquatic Center, you know, that that has taken place. This would obviously change it a little bit. And then as far as your comment, as far as keeping track and counting people, Nate's also aware how we currently do that, and at their downs, on their breaks, they do head counts per, per their chairs to see where we at. And it's pretty much a random, not random number, but an educated number, guess, based on the count, how many people we have at those times. And we do have scheduled breaks at twelve, twelve fifteen, two fifteen, and five.
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five, right? Or twelve fifteen, two fifteen, five.
Yeah, everyone except adults have to vacate the pool.
I see. Okay. Just to make sure things, good, okay.
Right. It's a, it's a, it's a, besides being a lifeguard break, it's also a swimmer's break, right? Which other facilities do it differently, where they may be full shutout for hours, but to get their cars out of the sun and so forth, you know, stuff like that, or swimmers that might get tired.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'll go ahead, Lauren.
I, I'm finished. You answered me. I, you have no really science, you don't have like a tick, one person with a counter.
No, we've talked, we've talked about a turnstile or something that records your number as you're going in and exiting, because the other problem is, we have a turnstile that's out only. So as people go in, they don't necessarily always come back out the same way. So if one dedicated turnstile in the main entrance wouldn't do us any good, because you have forty people going up the turnstile outside. The other thing is, you know, as the way our facility's set up, if you're going into the facility through the men's or women's, you have to go through the locker rooms to get to the pool, regardless of what you do. And if you exit that back, all people back through the restroom the same, same way to get help, or you can choose to do the turnstile.
Uh, this, this is the, can I, can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Sure. So, so this is what I, this is my thoughts regarding this issue. First and foremost, I'm gonna thank Mr. Cronin for, obviously, you know, obviously coming in, giving his remarks, and I understand how difficult this must be for him and also other individuals who are in, who are going to the same, the same thing right now. But in regards to the parks, and I said this to Mr. Cronin, and I said this to the other constituents, was that I have two main concerns. The first main concern is obviously the public and the, the health and safety of all the individuals that are going to be attending, you know, obviously going to the pool here. I would be in favor of opening the, of the pool under two, if these two conditions are met. The first condition is obviously a written plan. So I, I wanna see something in written, in writing that will show that, that where, you know, kind of have a plan in place, now how to be, how to ensure that if you, you know, there's, there's six feet distancing, or some sort of plan in place there prior to us opening. And the second portion is, I think we need to also continue discussions with the Village of Rothschild and the City of Schofield. I know that we, as a village board, has prided ourselves in becoming good neighbors and working with our surrounding communities here, especially since we're selling joint passes within the Village of Rothschild. I think we need to also sit down with them as well and see what their thoughts are. If, if my recommendation for the board would be, is that if we send this back to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and have the Parks and Recreation Committee meet with the parks, with the, the pool commission from the Village of Rothschild and the City of Schofield, and kind of talk that out, and kind of come to a compromise, and then bring it back to the board here. That's my thoughts.
Sean?
Just to touch on these comments, I mean, we've been communicating with Rothschild Schofield the entire time through this whole process. They actually just showed, they just made the decision and voted to close their pool for the season.
Nate?
Just, yeah, it just came out, and he just.
I just got the text from Osterbrink.
Yeah, he just sent the message saying that they chose, and I also did attend the Wassa Parks Committee meeting tonight, too.
What's gonna happen?
So what did? Wassa has decided to defer making a decision till June first, till their June first meeting. And they also, instead of making a decision on all pools, they also threw in the caveat that they may focus all their efforts on one of their pools versus trying to open all three. But then, the whole decision comes up, and Wassa had struggled with before, was which one pool, because we know every neighborhood that has one wants theirs open in the picture. So that's one of their caveats that they wanna bring back. They're hoping to have some more information by the June first meeting, because of, there's still a lot of the unknowns. We know legislatively, the legislature's working with the governor right now to possibly develop another plan or put something in place. We don't know, we'll go through and try to get, get it open, and then something, a new order could come down.
Sean, can you repeat again what the decision, what the Village of Rothschild, what their decision were? You were, you were going in and out on me here.
Okay, the Village of Rothschild and Schofield Aquatic Center chose to close the pool for the year.
Okay.
I, I saw a press release today from the governor's office that said he is, you know, he's disappointed in the action, but he's gonna now, he's not gonna give you any more orders, he's gonna allow local government to handle it. That's why, I mean, I see three stuff, I mean, stuff every day from there, but my, my, my one opinion is to open the pool, number one. We are not a regional draw. We are regional in this area. We get some Rothschild Schofield, possibly Wassa people. I mean, can you pay day passes? Sure, I'm sure. But if the Vels is opening, and some of it completely with, with no, you know, no formulas at all, I mean, that's a regional draw. That's coming out of Chicago, that's coming out of five, a five-state area, probably. I mean, it's, it's completely coming in that area. There's a hotel usage, everything. And, you know, so I, I look at us as more of a regional, I, I, you know, we don't have that many cases. I'm not saying that's something ain't gonna happen, but they're also saying the models show it falls, like any flu or any virus would do. I agree with a plan. I, I think that we would have a plan regardless. So if we're gonna open up, we would have a plan, and that would be one of the things for ye. Then now we know what the Rothschild Schofield is doing, but I, I'm sure we would share our facilities here. Maybe we could use some of their resources, maybe they'd come and help, you know, a little bit, so that we can make this one pool, like Wassa's thinking of only having one out of their three. My real concern is that we start now, so that we are able to open in a month, that we don't draw this, 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 this decision for a couple more weeks, and then a couple more weeks, well, then we might as well just stay closed. I, if we don't start right now and start activating that pool, we can't open in the middle of June, like we want to. My biggest concern is, how are we gonna run the pool? So if, you know, you were a guard there, so when are the hours of the pool? Open?
We're open eleven to seven forty-five.
Eleven to seven forty-five, okay. So my, my thoughts on a written plan would be, there's three different times in that period, that you shut that thing down for ten minutes, the entire group's gotta go, that's their turn, and now a third, a second group can come in. You know, so if that's eleven, what is that, eight hours, two and a half hours to be able to enjoy? I don't think it's first come, first served, and then a group of four or five hundred people get to stay there the entire day. I, or maybe it's twice a day, you gotta stop and start. You know, it'll give a little bit, you know, it'll be one of those breaks, maybe. I, I think that's the bigger thing on how we would run it if we'd open it back up. I, I think that's the bigger thing on how we would run it if we'd open it back up. And I, uh.
It's a good idea.
And I also think the slides should be closed to save some, uh, uh, guard and, and any kind of safety issues there. Just, the slides have to be closed, use it to cool off, not for, you know, flying through the air on a slide. And, um, that'd be my thought. Barb?
Well, I guess I just, the only, I know when my grandkids were smaller and I'd take them to the pool, I'd get there and we'd be there maybe about ten minutes and they blew the whistle and we all had to come out and wait for a while. If I got there and just got there and you blew the whistle and told me I had to leave, I would be very upset.
Oh, I see, that, that you get there at the tail end.
Right.
I'm assuming that with this shortened amount of people in there, I'm assuming this thing will be at max immediately. That's what I'm assuming, and if I'm wrong there, then I, then I'm all wet.
What I think.
I, I totally understand what you're saying here, that, oh.
You know, because then we had to sit around for whatever, you know.
Yeah, if, if you're, if you're going there and just, and you get there at the tail end of that first group, and then they make a relief, and then how are you gonna, you know, state your case on, hey, I just got here, I'm not even wet, you know, so.
But I think we can do, in the plan, we can put it together so they, the community knows what we're doing. Because if Rothschild and Schofield have closed.
Yep.
There's gonna be those folks that are gonna, that are gonna want, and your, your two or three, whatever, however many opening and closes that we have for, for the people that are coming, they'll hit that early, that early time, if it's eleven o'clock, there's gonna be four hundred and fifty people that are there that are gonna come in. And then if we have them leave at two thirty, or, or whatever the time is, three o'clock, three thirty, then bring the other ones in at four o'clock, and they've got, they've got the evening shift, so. However, however we figure it out, and however you write it up, and that, you know, it's disappointing that, I think, our surrounding areas are closing. I think it, it's, it's interesting to see the dynamics of the people that are out in public and the ones that are really taking it, that you can see are anxious.
Right, right. Well, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm listening to everyone here, and I, I can imagine the people listening, uh, at other places, and other people with the same dilemma. On one hand, private citizens, private business is desperately, passionately trying to open. And government is, you know, you know, slowing it down or closing, or keeping it closed. And, um, it, it's, it's just, it's, um, it's a head scratcher, it really is. I, I don't wanna try to think, well, this certainly ain't worth money, because we're not gonna make money. Because normally, normally, a lot of my decisions are on money, so, but on this one, we're not gonna make money. So, it, it's, it's about opening, it's about enjoyment.
And doing the right thing for the taxpayers.
And doing the right thing for the taxpayers, maybe it's every hour you get a different wristband of a color, and at the end of that hour, after the first two or three hours, that color's gone. And, and then that would eliminate, uh, your grandkids getting booted, Barb, after an hour. I don't know, I, my, my thought is to get this thing at least started. And that's why my question was two weeks ago, what's it gonna cost? If we get this thing ready to open, and then we don't open, or we leave it dormant, maybe some things happen, maybe some fluid issues happen, and we, we don't wanna open it yet. But at least we're ready, at least we're not thirty days behind, and that's what I understand, thirty days. To, to, if we haven't started, we've got thirty days, right?
I think that if we focused our resources obviously towards it, that, you know, we could be open by mid-June at this point.
Okay.
Around June thirteenth, I think that gives us four weeks' time period.
So that's four weeks, okay.
Um, which is only a, a week late, you know, maybe the nineteenth following week.
See, that, that's my concern, to be ready. I mean, otherwise, if we're gonna just keep putting this, this decision off to even be ready, to even start the process of opening, that's what we're doing, you know, 'cause we're just, we're just, we gotta shorten that thirty-day window, or that four-week window a little bit, and. I just, I would rather be ready, and yep, we put all this money into it, I guess we're not gonna open, that's the way it is. I mean, but we also have an awful lot of money going into the pool this year. If we don't open, are we not, we're not, we're saving it till next year, we're not gonna spend it?
Well, uh, yeah, I mean.
We got ten, ten thousand bucks into pumps already.
Yeah, we, between the pumps and some of the other work that took place, I think, uh, I just looked at quarter of the bill today, and we're at thirteen thousand spent, um, out of maintenance budget, so far out of the thirty that's budgeted, uh.
So, on the, on the, the Crean and the Hoist estimates, you said you just got the assistance received, what is that running? Because if we don't open, then that should be put off till next year.
Right, right, and I, and those, and like I said, those items were actually the, that was a CIP item, which is not part of the operating budget.
Why, it, yeah, it doesn't matter, it's still coming, it, it was still gonna run, if we got a board this year.
But we would wait the year of, of use, I mean, like, I thought I saw resurfacing. So, instead of resurfacing or resealing, let's wait till next year and at least not waste a year by now opening.
Right, but the, the resurfacing project was actually a two-year project. It was gonna be started this fall, after the season, and then we finish next spring, we can do a two-year project, so. It was, well, over, um, you know, we, we weren't gonna do it during the season or anything like that, so.
You know, to the financial element of Barb's point, I agree with Mark, if we're gonna do it, we need to make the decision tonight and get it open. Because are we still gonna lose money? Yeah, but we're gonna lose more if we drag this out. It doesn't make sense waiting till July to open this for a mon, you know, five, six weeks. You know, if we're gonna do it, then we need to move.
You know, and, and, and to your point there, uh, Mr. President, um, you know, I'm, I'm not saying, I mean, I, I think we need to vote tonight to, to get started. In two weeks from now, our next meeting, something comes up, something comes out, I, I would absolutely vote in favor of then keeping it closed. That, okay, we put some money into it, or even, even four weeks from now. I am, I'm not gonna, if, if something changes, I would switch over and say close. But I think we gotta at least start to get the process started, I do think.
If, if the question is to start preparations tonight, then sure, I can, I can agree with that. But if the, if the question tonight is, uh, do we open or stay closed? I don't think that we have enough information yet, so I would vote to stay closed.
I, I think that's, is that, would that be a fair, would that be fair to put that on as a question that way? That we would actually start the process, but we haven't made the decision to open yet? At least it puts us ahead of the game. I'm, Sean or Gar? I, I'm not the president, so you better, Sean, point the game.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could obviously start the process, and that was, that was my plan as of last week. And my thought process was that we were moving forward with this, that, you know, that we would start preparing, and that was my goal today, and then, um, and I've really here shared the information that I've researched, gathered, we've heard through various groups, and I guess I, to be, at least I'll front with you, I did talk to the Health Department today. And their recommendation to us is to not open the pool. Is, because they feel like based on circumstances, situation, the, how a pool is operated, some of the areas that we have, the pool itself, um, social distancing is gonna be hard to, obviously.
Enforce.
Enforce, um, the locker room's nearly impossible. Um, and that if they do receive complaints, and it could be as much as a mother sitting there taking a picture and saying, these people are not social distancing, if the Health Department receives complaints, they will be forced to investigate and, and shut us down.
Like they did the farmer's market, and they came and they looked, and they said we're doing it great.
Right, right, and like I said, as long as you're following the plan and doing the things, and as, you know, they don't receive those complaints, there's no issue. But as, as simple as, you know, anybody communicating that they see something that is not being done right, it could be cleaning, it could be social distancing, it could be whatever, um, that they, they can still shut us down because they are a licensing agent for the facility.
Keith, I got, I got a comment or two here. I guess, we talk about having a plan in place, rules, and I guess, my thought would be that the fewer rules, the better. I think that would even be the best advice we'd get from an attorney, would, would be that if you have less rules, there, you can't be taken to task or criticized for not following them. Um, I don't know how practical it is really to try to enforce a social distancing, uh, requirement or recommendation in a pool anyway. Um, so, I guess, I know we are expecting probably there's gonna be some other order coming down. Um, again, it's maybe that goes back to that fundamental question, I guess, do people, they just accept the risk, whatever risk that it may be? I, I question how a, how a health officer can make a case that the only risk is COVID-nineteen. Is there another, you know, you've had bacterial, and we've had bacterial incidents at the pool, we've had, um.
Code brown.
Other things, you know, that.
I'm wondering how you were gonna, somebody was gonna.
Code brown, yeah.
Um, so I, I, I know when we, this was called off our insurance agent, and, uh, they said, yeah, you know, that's, it's really not any different than the risk that we've been exposed to before, in, in their opinion, essentially, right?
Right, right, unless we're defying some state order or something, whatever you know, then.
Lauren?
Um, I would like to make a motion if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So, I move that we, and, uh, prepare for an opening June thirteenth, is that correct? You're, you could get it done by June thirteenth?
Should be.
Or at eleven, what'd you say, nine?
Jesus.
I don't remember what you said.
Thirteenth.
He said the thirteenth.
I got more candy.
Excuse me, let me finish my motion, then you can shred it up if you'd like.
That would, that would give us more weeks, yes.
Do the prep work in anticipation of a June thirteenth meeting, it always leaves us open to close. Not to say that once we open, we could close in two weeks, by order, okay? The other thing is, I don't know if the, um, I'll make that motion, and I don't like to make compound motions because it just compounds the issue, so that's my motion.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Motion by why, second by feeding, on a question.
Uh, yes, uh, I, I just wanna, I guess the amendment to that motion is that, uh, with the review date, two weeks, um, you know, for the board to review the opening date two weeks prior to, uh, uh, probably the two weeks prior to the, uh, June meeting, prior to the opening of it, 'cause, I, I, like I said, I wanna still be able to review the, uh, uh, protocols and policies, or whatever plan that we have may have in place prior to us opening. That's just my thoughts, and that would be amendment for me, that's.
Okay, well, I don't, I, I think that the motion really doesn't address whether we're gonna open or not, it just, uh, it says it being prepared. So I think it's, it'd be preferable to just keep with that motion, and then we can have discussion, but we can list it on the agenda for the June first meeting.
I think we have to vote to open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're only vote, we're only voting right now.
This is for preparation. Preparation, so the motion is.
If, if that is the case, if we're only voting for the preparation portion and not about the opening yet, then I would be okay to destroy my amendment.
Okay.
Totally.
So, and I will have it on the June first, uh, June first is it, yeah? June first agenda will be a decision on whether or not to open the pool. This is just for the preparation. Barb?
Yeah, I guess in that, for us to vote on it, I would like to, as ye said, show a plan, and I like your idea of the wristband, that they would be allowed, that you would have more kids coming in, and actually, it would solve a little bit of the financial thing.
It may help us, and I agree, I think the wristband idea is colored, and whether it's two or three times with enough time to shut down the facility, everybody's released. Now you have, now staff can clean everything without any interruptions, having to worry about, like you said, if lifeguards aren't lifeguarding, they can sanitize everything, and whether it's, we do two shifts or three shifts, if we've got, what, a eight-hour period? But if we've got two four-hour shifts, or two, two and a half, or three two-and-a-half hour shifts with enough time to clean in between, I'd like to see, um, Sean and Keith work with staff on coming up with what that plan should state, um, prior to the June first meeting, so then we would have all the details and can make a decision on that.
And then have it posted, so that if somebody like me comes at ten minutes before you're gonna close it up, I'm looking at it and I'll say, well, we'll wait out in the parking lot for, you know.
Right, for the next day.
Like a sandwich board that you could write on with chalk.
What percentage would stay all day, you know?
Uh, we would probably, probably thirty, forty percent.
That much, okay.
Yeah, and we have people that, we are their babysitters, so they literally have their kids off at eleven, and they don't pick them up till they're after work.
Can they do that?
Yes.
How old are they?
Over ten years old, supposed to be over ten years old.
Yeah.
Wow, we're talking about liability of getting sick?
We have.
Yeah.
This is like a, a toxic stuff.
We have a very sizable.
Summer daycare.
We have a very sizable contingent from Edgar that comes every single day.
And drops ten-year-olds?
Yep.
Sure, wow.
So, as far as the options for, um, we've talked about options in our meetings for the last month, um, through the, uh, state association, and they have, you know, wristband ideas, taking reservations, like no different than restaurants are doing right now. You, I mean, you literally can't go unless you're making a restaurant that's sit-down one, is what I've heard.
That's not true. That's a silly, you know, credit.
So, I mean, you know, so there's, there's various options, they've talked about doing like special time for certain groups, so like family swim time only, which is something Wassa does right now, they use, you know, family swim time at six o'clock and nine, seven, or a toddler time, so you can only have parents with little kids during certain times. So there's lots of options that they've talked about, that, you know, we could put in a plan that, you know, and see what, what.
Okay, Sean, well, yeah, we'll, we'll get into the details next meeting, so we'll get specific. We have a motion and a second. Anything else on a question?
I would like to add, and I really, because of the proposed budgets, and we're all looking at large deficits, and I know the pool doesn't, it doesn't normally have surpluses, but it has for the last couple of years. And usually the deficits aren't that large, so right now we're looking at sixty and a hundred and two. I think part of the thought process is not decide tonight, is to decide where the, where are we gonna fund that from? We can't just approve an additional sixty thousand dollars in expenditures and not really consider where we're gonna fund that from. And I know it's always brought up the TIF, but this is a different pot of money, this is general fund and room tax, so it's just, uh, something I really want the board to consider.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Jess. Okay.
We'll vote.
On the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
No, skip, sir. Sorry.
I mean, I'd vote for opening it, but I'll vote for getting it ready.
Okay, item number twenty-five, plan development. Jen, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, anything to add in your report?
I don't have anything additional unless someone has a question.
Okay, any questions for Jen?
Very busy.
Yeah, I see, I'm surprised that we've had that much building going on in the first quarter.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Police?
All right.
Clay, are you out there? Clay? Chief Schultz?
Sorry, I was on mute, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, I just have a couple things I need to report in the stats, um, I wanted to make a comment about our stats. We see our total calls for the month of April were fifteen hundred and nine, eleven hundred and twenty for the village. Um, we are seeing a reduction in calls for service, but we are, um, seeing an increase in self-initiated activity through the officers, they're conducting a lot of extra patrols, doing a lot of things that we, quite frankly, haven't had the time for in the past, so, um, it's good to see that the officers are staying busy and being a younger apartment that we're trending towards, that they're very anxious to get back and arrest people.
Oh, correct their misbehavior, sure.
Yeah.
Wow, yes, so, um, just a staffing update, we, we took in fourteen applications, um, after we had a vacancy with Terry Peterson retiring and Cory Booms going into the sheriff's department. Um, we're having open enrollment process, our hiring process has changed a little bit. We, we ended up testing and interviewing, uh, twelve, we were down to eight that we interviewed, based on qualifications of the eight. We only passed one onto the police commission, the other seven were not very favorable. Um, the good news was the one candidate, uh, was a star, he was great, he did wonderful, the police commission loved him, so we're, gave him a contingent offer, and the, that's great. Uh, second opening, we had three more applications after this process a couple weeks ago. We're doing a virtual written test through Zoom where we kinda watch them, um, and then we're doing Zoom video interviews, which is really, really great, it's fast. Um, and we'll probably pass on to the police commission, and that meeting will be scheduled maybe this week, or possibly next week. Budget-wise, uh, I wanna schedule a joint finance meeting very soon. Our audit has been completed, uh, looks great for twenty nineteen, we're also really doing great this year. We're very fortunate, I know a lot of departments like Wassa PD, I believe they said they're paying like eight grand a month to have their facilities cleaned professionally, um, we've been great, we've been really fortunate to have great partnerships like, uh, DC Ever School District that's coming in doing, um, Corax three sixty every day, our offices, um, clerical area break room, and our squad cars, we also had K-Tech cleaning approach us, and they have, they have the expensive medical-grade cleaning stuff, and we're taking our squads there. We also had K-Tech cleaning approach us, and they have, they have the expensive medical-grade cleaning stuff, and we're taking our squads there with they, to light them down. They've been great, they're, uh.
So the partnerships we've had, then?
I don't know, keep our budget in line, they've been really reasonable.
Sounds great.
Okay.
We're also looking for other cleaning, uh, long-term solutions for our building. Um, I think it was, it's a good time now, kind of evaluate where we are and where we want to be.
Building different bits from different companies.
But again, um, preferably just a better cleaning job for our, for those. Lastly, I just wanted to let everybody know, um, how supportive the community has been, uh, to EMPD, I, I don't know how they've been to other entities, but we've had numerous thank yous, and companies and businesses bringing us food and cakes, and food orders, and some of these, um, like Wee Good Field has been closed, um, just been phenomenal, the donations and the thank yous from the community. It's, um, it's just really great to see that they're so, so supportive of us in what we do. And, um, the connection that we've had, and like, I guess the relationships that we've built with some of the business owners, um, I'm getting a lot of phone calls from borrowers, they want to be compliant, they, they're asking me questions, um, which is really wonderful. I mean, you, you'd think that you would have someone somewhere trying to, you know, get one past us, or um, hope they don't get caught, cause that's generally what we deal with, but they have, uh, you know, like, trade outside, Michael Erdman's been calling me, and, you know, he wants to make sure that they're doing things correctly, and um, I got a phone call from, uh, the nineteenth home owner as well. Um, so that communication's been wonderful, I just think it's, it's good that we, they feel comfortable enough to call and ask questions, and, and that they want to do things correctly, so. I just wanted to give kind of a thank you to the community, and let you guys know that, um, how fortunate we are, and, you know, creative, uh, business owners, and and people we have in our community saying thank you to, uh, your, your officers and officials. So with that, um, that's all I really have, unless you had any questions for me.
Any questions for Clay? All right.
Good job.
Thanks, Clay.
Thanks, Clay.
You're very welcome.
Okay, item number twenty-seven, Public Works, Michael.
Yeah, um, so the words attached, I guess one thing is, uh, just wanted to note that, uh, I just want to give a kudos to our operations staff, um, and we're one of the few communities, if not the only one in the area, that, uh, our hourly staff has been here every day, many other communities went half on, half off. I could imagine where we'd be if we were only working with half a crew, we'd be able to keep our normal work shift, um, you know, slightly modified, you know, earlier start times, later start times, uh, people were born in different areas, but, uh, you know, our normal spring activities continue per usual, so, um, I guess that's just, uh, hats off to those guys for, um, kind of thinking through it and, uh, making sure that, uh, we're still taking care of what we need to take care of periodically. And I guess, uh, we've got a bunch of, uh, street maintenance items in the package, uh, just kind of threw an overview of how that kind of lays out with our budgets, so, uh, after the bids, um, still about three thousand dollars, um, in contingency funds. And also with our CIP projects, uh, it looks like we should be, um, I guess projected at about three hundred thousand dollars under budget with the general fund overall. I guess we'll see how things, actual quantities come in as the summer progresses, but, uh, it looks like overall we should be coming in under or at budget with, uh, the major projects for this year, so.
Okay. Any questions for Michael?
Good job.
All right, thanks, Michael. Technology, nothing, and H not here. Uh, work product transmittals looking for acknowledge, uh, items number twenty-nine and thirty, April twenty twenty, building permits, and April budget status report.
I move to acknowledge items twenty-nine and thirty.
Second. Motion by White, second by Feeny, on a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull out of consent agenda for individual considerations? If not, we'll be looking, uh, for someone to approve items thirty-two to thirty-nine.
Motion to approve thirty-two through thirty-nine.
Second. Motion by Ziegler, second by Feeny, on a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So that, that puts the cap into play on the, on the.
Yep.
Okay, good, all right.
Item number forty-one, resolution number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, encouraging voting by mail.
The reason why, uh, trustee John and I thought that this resolution was important is because, uh, as has been said previously, we don't know how things will be like, uh, come August or November for voting. Additionally, I live in an older part of the neighborhood where many, uh, citizens don't own a computer and/or don't have internet access, so they don't know or don't trust how to request absentee ballots uh, via the internet, and don't trust it to put in their photo ID. I think this is a reasonable and prudent public, uh, public health and public safety measure that would, uh, that would increase the likelihood of people voting.
Can you comment?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I, this is my third stint as a, uh, I'm now a trustee, supervisor, and a trustee. And, um, uh, I have a very flexible job, and I'm very thankful for that. Um, I'm not, I don't always know where I'm gonna be on voting day, so I've come down here on, and to vote, you know, at, right here at the, in the office. I've never had nothing mailed to me, but it is just, um, it's amazing to, to have this resolution that we would vote by mail. And that when I come down here, and I think I'm pretty well-known, uh, they ask me every single time for my driver's license, every single time. And, and there's times I, I have a little sarcastic, uh, uh, talk, but I have never said it yet, never. But I have something, it's right in, right in my tongue, and I have to hold every power to not say something funny, or, you know, a little smart, because they're doing their job, they're doing their job, but they know who I am. And so we're gonna go from that to mailing a ballot out, and then walking across the street, or having someone come over to my house to validate it. I can't vote for this, not, not even close.
Actually, this only sends out the application, we cannot send out the ballot without the application.
Mm-hmm. But. This is getting closer to mail, uh, voting, and to, uh, not have transparent voting, and I can't vote for it.
Barb?
Well, I, I have a concern in that you're sending out the application, you're, you're more staff time, more expense. And how many of these people are going to know that they have, I know it says it on the application, don't get me wrong, that they have to, when they send this application, and have to have
Witness.
A ID sent with it. Now they don't have copy machines, so they can't copy the thing. I mean, this just can keep going around and around. To me, um, I guess in some ways, people are responsible for themselves, and we cannot keep babysitting. And that's what this is, and I can see people getting very upset because they get this in the mail. Cause I know some people that just do not trust absentee voting at all. And it doesn't mean that, yeah, they don't have to do it.
They don't have to vote by mail.
But I can see already the conspiracy wheels going around in their heads. But my main concern is that this is no different than the people that have the instructions right there and do not have a witness sign the absentee ballot. They send it in, and it's not witnessed. Um, I, well, I had an incident with one of my relatives that I, you know, that she read it and did it absolutely wrong. I mean, you know, um, and it wasn't so bad that she did it for a neighbor too, but it's just, to me, it, we cannot babysit the world. I, I mean, we have to take responsibility, and if at this point in time, with all the news, with all, everything that's going on, and I understand the computer, there is people, I have relatives that don't have it, um, but they know enough to come in and, you know, get the absentee ballot. They can write a letter, if they, if they don't have a car, they can write a letter and ask to have an application sent. They can call and find out how to do it, so that, I, I would not be in favor of this at all.
John?
Well, do we have a motion second on this, or are we on the go?
No, this is just discussion.
Still, just a discussion?
Still discussion, always made a motion.
I have a, a letter that was sent to me, that maybe, should I wait until after we've opened it up, or?
It doesn't, you can, you, you don't have to have a motion to have discussion.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
All right, so this letter's a little lengthy, so if you guys had water, it would be probably better. Um, recently I heard some rather disturbing news about one of your fellow trustees, Nathan Feeny. According to a recent news release, he has decided the Village of Weston should become an agency for political action, and send absenteeism ballots to all the residents of the Village of Weston. Having been a village trustee in a small Weston town for, for several years, a prior lifetime, I understand the concept and the motivation, but my advice to you is to strongly urge everyone to vote against this. If there is a motion to vote on it, there are several reasons why I believe it's not in your personal best interests, and certainly why it's not in the interest of the citizens of the, of the village, or the village as a legal entity. Reason number one, no time, the time and effort and other resources to provide absenteeism ballots to all residents will only create more work for the already overworked village employees, who absolutely bear the brunt of this proposed effort. There isn't enough time or manpower to get the current workload done, so why do you want to add a monumental task such as this to an already overburdened workforce? Village employees will not be happy about this because it makes no sense from an available time and resources standpoint. Standpoint, we need to keep our valued employees, we need to keep our valued employees, as they are not only hard to find, but even harder to retain. Reason number two, no budget, our budgets at the village are already busting at the seams. There's no room to add such a cost to our budget when we're already short on money to operate it. As many of you mentioned in your pre-election Q and A with the media, there is already a shortage of funds for the many necessities or projects you'd like to see receive money. Let me remind you that there will be no state funding to undertake this, undertake this massive mail-in effort, and that leaves the taxpayer of Weston to foot the bill, which will include you. I personally like the lower tax rates we enjoy in our village, so please don't add an unnecessary burden to our taxation levels. Taxpayers will hold you accountable. Reason number three, no nanny state, as you know, it is each resident's individual responsibility to vote, not the responsibility of our government to come to our door or mailbox and ask us or tell us to vote, and thus it never should be incumbent upon a municipality to create a nanny state, because some people are concerned about what might or might not happen within the voting cycle. There are already well-established means available for any resident wishing to receive a mail-in ballot to get one, just, just as I did. If this resident wants one, they can request one, but trustees should not be in the business of hijacking well-established, fully functional, open, accessible system, pushing it to overdrive because a few individuals ostensibly want to be caretakers of the entire village electorate. Reason number four, potential fraud. Mail-in voting is rampant with the fraud. We've seen it all across the US, US, and cities and townships and municipalities and counties, and even entire states find themselves embroiled in illicit or illegal mail-in voting schemes. Not only is there potential that the village itself could inadvertently implement a highly controversial effort, but the pen, potential for individual fraud is staggering. We've all witnessed through multiple media accounts, the charges levied at municipalities by efforts stemming from overzealous political activists, especially in highly polarized political environments we are currently in. Invoking a village-level implementation of a mail-in voting scheme is a perfect incubator for the Village of Weston to get mirrored down in a fighting due to accusations of fraud, dishonesty, politicizing, and other perceived illicit assets, activities. It's very dangerous ground for municipalities to step into, dozens of landlines. Reason number five, lawsuits. It would behoove any trustee to avoid getting the village voluntarily into a situation where we, the taxpayers, get sucked into a lawsuit that would not only create all sorts of publicity for, bad publicity for the village, but no doubt costs the innocent taxpayers of Weston millions of dollars in unnecessary legal fees to get the ensuing battle cleaned up. Undoubtedly, if the village board decides to vote in favor of sending mail-in ballots to all residents because they feel like it's the right thing to do, I can guarantee you that there will be ensuing lawsuits that will cost us all a lot of money, money that we can't afford to spend, money we need for our residents' projects, development, and our family. Reason number six, activism. Let's just be honest, Nathan Feeny is being overly political, and activism simply doesn't belong at a village trustee level. Trustees are here to present all, all of the constituents, not just a political party. Activism will only serve a few and not the, the many, as we see so commonly at the state and federal levels. Trustees should put their efforts into the positions they volunteered for and not stray into politics, because they must serve all of the village residents fairly and equally. As a former village trustee from the O'Clare area, I always tried to put my biases away and strive to vote for what would benefit all of the people in the town, not my own political party. In closing, I wish you great wisdom, I know you have a lot of decisions to make, and many are not easy. I hope you have serious debates with dozens of constituents and give great thought to the gravity, gravity of implementing a village-wide mail-in effort. Please understand the serious implications of such critical measures and the pains and lingering issues it will cause for the residents of our nice little village of Weston. Please don't let this happen. That was from David Niseth, a Village, uh, of Weston resident.
I, uh, I would like to take issue with a few of the points. Firstly, voter fraud by mail is essentially non-existent. Washington and Oregon have been doing this since the nineteen eighties without the, or without any of the, uh, concerns about fraud being raised. Secondly.
Nate, I, I don't want to get into, you're, you're stating what you're saying, it's, it hasn't occurred. My mother-in-law, who passed away, um, a year and a half ago, she got, she went to vote two, two years in a row, and somebody, and she was living in a, a retirement, uh, an elderly retirement home, and somebody already voted for her via absentee ballot. And she went with her ID and showed her, and, and they wouldn't accept, she wasn't allowed to vote. So I know firsthand that, yes, there's fraud with it, but, so you can't make a blanket statement that there's no voter fraud, cause I, I don't, I know for a fact that it occurs. So at what level, I don't know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pretend to debate it, cause I don't know. I do know it occurs, cause I've seen it firsthand. Um, so, if, if you're, it's great that you can state your opinion, but i- if you're gonna put, uh, uh, something as a fact out there, then you really have to be able to back it up, cause I clearly, we, you know, mail-in ballot, we had in, in Wisconsin, Green Bay, they had, what, the two large bins of ballots that were lost or misplaced. Um, my opinion is, I, there's no way I would vote for this resolution, because I don't think it's incumbent upon us as village trustees to tell people how they should vote. Not who to vote for, but tell how they should vote.
This doesn't do that.
But mailing a ballot to someone puts all these applications out there in the public for people who may or may not want it. They have, if they want it, then they can request it. If they want to request absentee ballot, they request it. If they want to vote in person, they request it. They make the decision. If we pass a resolution that's saying, our village board voted on this resolution that we want you to do this, that's not our role. Our role is to provide them with the opportunities, and we do it through the website. Sherry lets them know what all the, all the ways that they can vote. But for us as elected officials to tell our taxpayers, we want you to do this, and we're gonna send you an application, cause this is a preferred way to vote. I don't agree with it. Um, and, you know, it also delves into national politics. There's a lot of debates going on, and, you know, and I, we have people that live in here, that some are conservatives, some are liberals, some are independent, and they're all across the spectrum. I don't want to get any, into anything, and I, I will never vote for a resolution that involves national political topics. That's not our job. We're a local village, we're here to provide services to the community, that's it. We shouldn't be trying to influence one way or the other, and we don't, I don't care what, at the state and national level, whatever that issue is, then you go to those politicians to fight, but not here. I will, I will not vote for this, I will not vote for any resolution that addresses national topics. You know, that's for the national politicians to address, we address the local issues. That's my thoughts. Lauren?
I just have a couple of comments, um, even though this has not been moved or anything yet, but, yeah, so we're gonna mail, uh, a, a request for an absentee ballot to every registered voter. Was that, if that's the theory behind this, correct?
Just the application, yes.
Okay, so are we gonna include a self, an envelope so they can mail it back?
That would be my intention, yes.
So now we're talking eight thousand, well, I don't know, what is postage nowadays?
It's over eighty.
Fifty cents here.
Okay, so it's forty, four thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars to mail it out, another four thousand two hundred and forty-four to have a stamped envelope in there, so they can mail it back, because if we want full participation, we just expect them to mail it back. because if we want full participation, we just expect them to mail it back.
And that, that's just the application, not the ballot going?
Correct. And then they have to get a, then we have to mail out another ballot. That's another four thousand two hundred. If everyone requested a mail-in, a mail-in ballot. So that's another, that's another four thousand dollars. So we're up to twelve thousand dollars. And are we gonna include the postage? I know mine didn't come with, I was glad to pay the fifty cents. It was pretty cheap.
Oh, we, it should have. We are required to put postage on the return.
See, that's right. So there's another, so we're talking sixteen thousand dollars potential. Because if you, even if you mail them up and nobody returns, you still spend that money. If only ten percent of them-
That's just for Weston.
Yes.
If this was done nationally, I mean, it's, it'd be unbelievable.
And then we're talking about-
I know it's wanted.
Two elections, August and November.
We survived, we survived two elections. I gotta tell you, I went by those Weston lanes both times. I was absolutely so proud of how that all went. Especially the first one with all the DPW people out there and everybody in their orange and yellow and, and I wanted the help, but I was on the ballot, so I couldn't, you know, I wanted to bring some food, but I couldn't because I was on the ballot. But I, I am, I, what is the process here? Does someone make a motion to?
No, anybody can make a motion. There's no motion.
Your resolution, you wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we move-
Barb just made a motion, by the way.
Well, I thought it was his, so.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Let, I can hold it off.
I would like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
This is Yilin Zhang, I'll second. Partially because also because I, I would say I support this resolution as well, but I also want to hear, I guess, the discussion. I've heard the discussion. I actually think this has been a very good discussion as well too. So I kinda want to hear more of the discussion.
I think the discussion's done.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second.
On the question.
On the question. I just have one thing I want to add on the question. When we have, we just had two, two elections. And we actually, in-person voting increased from the April election with eight hundred seventy-nine voted in person to twelve hundred forty-seven at this last election in May. So obviously, people prefer, and they're probably scared at first, but people want to make that choice. They could have voted absentee. It was very well-publicized. They choose, so we actually increased almost five hundred people that went to go vote in person. And it's, I, I just want to include that.
But Sherry, I just have a question for you. Did we see an increase in attendee, in voters this,
I, I obviously not from the February election, but you know, have we seen an increase at all? Or has it been dramatically lower than before? I guess I'm just kinda curious as well.
We had an increase of about four hundred people from the April election, April versus May.
Okay. And if I'm understanding this correct, just from the kind of ballpark here, we're, we're expecting if we, if this does, resolution does go through, it would cost us approximately sixteen thousand dollars? Am I understanding that correctly? Just listening to the discussion. Am I correct?
If everyone votes-
Both elections.
In both elections.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
In turn, it won't be a hundred percent.
Well, I, I don't know. It'll cost us sixteen thousand dollars whether they vote or not in both elections because the stamps will have to be sent for them to send it back, whether they-
Use them or not.
Use them or not, that's, that's different. So we will still have sixteen thousand dollars in expenditure. Potentially, potentially. So that, that is, that is it. And I, I just want, I just want to say that I, I tend to agree with Wally on, on this one and Barb and, and I think, I'm not sure, Lauren, you haven't spoken on it yet?
Yes, I have.
Oh, wait, did I miss that? I'm sorry.
Those money comments.
Okay, alright. I was so, so busy reading. And Mr. Nyseth was kind enough to send a, a nice, well-written letter. I, I happen to agree with him as well. I just think it's, it's wrong. It's, it's our job as a village trustee to do what's right for the residents of the village in the most cost-effective, efficient manner. Getting into the politics of it is not what a village of Weston trustee should be doing.
Yep. I want to, I want to call the question and also ask for a roll call vote. I'm, I'm sorry. I just hear-
If you're calling for the question, I have a second. You're calling for the question.
Okay. I'm calling for a question.
I'll second. They need to vote on-
And, and then-
Okay, roll. Sherry, roll call vote, please.
Wait, wait, wait. We, we would be voting on the, I guess you would be asking for, if there's any objection to the call of question first.
Correct, correct.
Okay, is there any objections to the call of question?
I'm gonna object to it just because I wanted to make one more comment.
Okay, well-
He does, he's allowed to make one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, are you, am I, am I able to make a comment?
Yes.
I, I promise it'll be brief as well too.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I'm just gonna start off by saying that I, obviously I support the concept of this resolution, but when, when I first, you know, when I was talking to trustee Feeney about this, I actually thought it was gonna cost somewhere a lot, less than five thousand dollars or, you know, at most six thousand dollars, but sixteen thousand, no, at most six thousand dollars. But sixteen thousand dollars seems quite a bit for, especially cost quite a bit. I, I, as much as I support this trustee Feeney, I probably, I'm gonna vote against this just because of the amount of cost it's gonna cost, the, you know, cost for this. I mean, I, I can't go against what my personal values about arguing about the fact that we need to be as conservative as we can right now on funding up fiscally responsible, accountable, especially during this pandemic here. So I, my, my, I'm just gonna vote against this because of that portion there. I was expecting to be, the cost to be a lot less, but that's just my remarks for putting it out there.
Okay, any, anything else on the question?
The only other thing I'd like to say is that this is, when I wrote this, this is simply for public health and public safety. This is not an effort at partisan hackery. This is simply what I thought was the best way to maintain public health and public safety. That is all.
Okay.
Now you can call for the vote.
Call for vote. On the question, roll call, please, Sherry.
Ermeline.
Hi. I mean, no.
Feeney.
Aye.
Maloney.
No.
Sparks.
No.
John.
With the reasons, with the reasons I stated before, I'm going to vote no.
White.
No.
Ziegler.
No.
Okay. Resolution fails. Okay, new business. Item forty-two, twenty-twenty hydrant.
Hold your group.
Motion by Maloney.
Second.
Second. By Ziegler. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number forty-three, Weston School East Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. Number A, sidewalk on Arrow and Sunset Street, north of Kennedy Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's right.
We'll talk in the middle.
Go ahead.
Okay. Motion by Ermeline.
I have something on the question.
Second by Zhang. Okay, on the question.
I have questions on two of the items that were brought up, on item A and B. First off, about the sidewalks. I think the village on these short cul-de-sacs should conduct a, as mentioned in, I think it was in your comments?
Yes, sir.
Should assess each resident's desire to have sidewalks and look into the changes in the municipal set, code to provide for the study of future cul-de-sacs, length, number of residents, location, with the goal being pedestrian safety. Some of the things that were mentioned are quite valid connectivity. We have a connectivity plan in our complete streets.
Well, we used to. Not that we used to go by, but we have.
But every time, in my thirteen years here as a trustee and other positions, every time we come forward with sidewalks, we don't need them, don't want them, don't want to pay for them. I can guarantee you, if the village paid for the entire cost of every street project, we would have no complaints.
Oh, sure.
But when you have to, me personally, I've saved enough money over forty-five years to pay for the entire rebuild of the street in front of my house. And over those forty-five years, I've paid for reconstruction of a bunch of streets-
Everybody else's, yep.
That I very seldom drive on. But I think as we talk about being more responsive to our taxpayers, people don't want it. And I think some of the questions were, what if you build a sixteen-unit complex at the end of a cul-de-sac? Well, I, I don't think we have any cul-de-sacs like that and I don't, and we're not gonna build any more, at least that's the, the goal. But I think that should be done if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that. The other thing, item B, the street trees. The village should replace trees removed with the same species removed and/or allow the replacement with another species, provided that there is no cost difference. And that the species desired by the homeowner is not listed as prohibited species by village ordinances because we have some trees that are prohibited, such as maples.
I planted two in my backyard.
I have to rip my home.
No, you don't. Not if, not if they're, if they're on street trees, yes.
I'm just thinking.
Okay, Barb, I just want to go back. You said move to approve, but there is no specific motion even listed on here. And they put on there that it's meant for discussion-
Okay.
And possible action if there's a change in policy. So we're really addressing the two issues on whether or not not putting in sidewalks, which is current in the plan, and the replacement of the trees and the issue that Lauren just amended. So you can either amend your motion to something specific or you could withdraw it and we can have discussion.
We'll have discussion.
Discussion first, okay.
So trustee Zhang, are you willing to withdraw the second on that?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
Can I, can I go first? I mean, I really want to.
He is a trustee.
I want to ask some questions.
Well, and I'm old.
Um, okay, walk me through this, Mike. All right, I, before I came here, I actually went out to the, to the yacht, I'm sorry, the canoe place. Okay, I didn't call it yacht. Okay. And then I, and then I went on Kennedy and what is it? Arrow?
Arrow.
And one more, Sunset. So I came off of, I came off by the park, by the school property. And then I, I went east on Kennedy. So my first intersection is Sunset, right? And to the left is the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Right? And then, then the next, keep going on Kennedy, there's another cul-de-sac.
Yep, that's Arrow.
So where, what are the roads that are getting redone? Sunset, Arrow, and Kennedy up to How Far?
So it's Von Ken, so South Timber, so right next to the school.
South Timber isn't even a road.
It's not a cul-de-sac.
So thank God, I'm gonna replace that.
Yeah, so the roads getting redone are South Timber, Arrow, Sunset, and Von Kennel-
Okay.
And Kennedy, in between Ross Ave and Serber.
Ross, okay.
Or Corzal, in Thomas's case.
So my question is, so we're actually questioning all sidewalks or just the sidewalks for the cul-de-sac?
The question is just the ones on the cul-de-sac.
Okay. So we have seven properties on each of those cul-de-sacs. I, I completely understand the connectivity. I actually live on one, but I'm on, I'm one road up. So I would actually advocate sidewalks up to that last four, one, two, three, four houses or five, maybe four. My question, though, is on the corner lots on Kennedy.
Yep.
Is that, is that still gonna be a, the longest side gets assessed and then the rest goes into the project?
So the only thing we're assessing on this project for our special assessment ordinance is the driveway approaches.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Streets are free?
Streets are free. Twenty nineteen changed it.
We all paid for it.
We all paid for it.
Yeah.
Okay. And so then the sidewalks are-
Sidewalks are village-paid.
Oh, so everything is paid?
Correct.
So it's just the point of the sidewalk?
May I speak, sir?
Well, no, you, you spoke already. I mean, well, maybe you can, that's up to the president, but so the sidewalk, is there curb to it?
It's, it's obviously pines profile.
Right, okay, it's got a sort of-
Multiple, it's a soil.
Plus the roadway is getting done.
Yep.
And the sidewalks proposed are getting done, all at our expense.
Correct.
I mean, the, the whole community, okay. Because then I was gonna say, if we were gonna waive the sidewalks on the two cul-de-sacs, but yet they're getting a street, then they should still share in the total project. But yet, that's not, that's not an issue now. I, I have to, I have to agree. I think the two cul-de-sacs shouldn't get it. I think the sidewalks should go down Kennedy. I think the sidewalk should go in. I just don't, I think at, at Kennedy, they should be going east to west. And then Sunset and Arrow should go to that road and then just kind of dead end. And honestly, you have seven houses there. He, he's right. I mean, I actually had to count them. I mean, there, nobody's going through. There's no through traffic to have to protect the sidewalk. And honestly, in my lifetime, and I'll be sixty-one tomorrow, everybody.
Gosh.
Um, I have never seen a sidewalk on a cul-de-sac. I, I honestly don't think you want one. Is there one? No. I, I actually don't, I actually tried to envision the sidewalk there with a little bit of grass space and I can't. I mean, I, honestly, it's just, I'm trying to think of it from a bird's eye view too, how it happens to look. It, it just looks wild to me and I, and I thought about it and I actually drove back again and went back again and I have to concur. I think the, I think the sidewalks should be in the whole project, but I don't think they should be on the cul-de-sacs, starting from Kennedy and going north.
Trustee, what?
There's a, there's a diagram of both species on page one forty-seven.
I saw it. That's my thoughts. I'm one person thought.
By the way, I want sidewalks in front of my house.
Yes.
I will, and I'm willing to pay for them. I already have paid for them.
I would too. Let me keep that as a comment.
Keith?
So I think what's at question is the process by which this occurs. And we are interpreting this that our subdivision code is where the requirement to put in the sidewalk on both sides of the street comes from. So if we're talking about amendment or, the, the two options would, would be one, a waiver of this requirement in this, in this situation, which really should just revisit the, it should be done on a public hearing process, is what I understand. And the other option is making an amendment to the code overall. That would require another, that would also require a public hearing, but it's gonna be a more, it'll be a more broad brush kind of thing in the ordinance for future situations, which I think as staff, we would advocate based on this discussion so that we would have some flexibility. So you have, we would want to have a criteria where, okay, cul-de-sac doesn't have any possibility to extend to a street beyond. Perhaps look at the traffic count, the length, and then, you know, the type, yeah, the traffic count would then play into whether there's a multi-family development on the end versus a, a single family.
That's totally different.
So those kind of things should be factored in. So we're not gonna necessarily catch everyone. And as we explained out during, during the Public Works Meeting when Mr. Burrows attended last week, yes, trustee Ziegler lives on a cul-de-sac that was put in a subdivision that's longer. I'm not sure it has any more, it may not have any more houses on it. Actually, I'm not sure. Well, it probably has more than seven. But these are things that-
Less.
That, that were not required. And we, I know we've had this discussion, even I think you can remember this, trustee Maloney, that we, in the past, in some of the subdivisions that went in, in late, in the late two thousands or early two thousands, I guess, you know, this requirement for sidewalk was not in place. So we've, we were building our community on the automobile model, if you will, you know, not, not thinking about the pedestrians. So Jennifer is emailing me back and forth as we're talking and thinks that this really belongs as an, as an amendment to the ordinance, which means then there's a process. The process would be the, the public board or the Plan Commission would make a recommendation to the board for changes in the code and then the, the village board would have to conduct a public hearing.
Does that fit in the timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Burrows was, I guess quoted me correctly in that the sidewalk's one of the last things to go in the project.
Right, and I heard, I heard that said the other day.
Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, there's gonna be some things in this, in this change. I mean, it's gonna be multi, what Lauren said, the multi's gonna be a big factor and the length of it. But also, I've heard you say in the last year or so, we're trying not to build cul-de-sacs.
Correct.
So, okay.
And as far as I understand it, this is applicable only to cul-de-sacs. If we have a subdivision going in that's crisscross from the trees that go someplace to someplace, from someplace, all bets are off.
I would advocate sidewalk because I think we missed it in Sandy Meadows or whatever. I still call Tappyville. I live there. But, but boy, I think the residents here would really love to have sidewalks. I mean, especially with all those little kids.
Yeah, I, I was concerned, but now that you're saying that, that we don't start down this slippery slope of all of a sudden sidewalks are optional again because nobody, for whatever reason, people want sidewalks, but they want it on your side, not my side. And if you think that hasn't happened, believe me, it has. They said-
Yep, every time a project-
Every time a project, this has always been an issue. And that was one of the reasons back when the board decided that they weren't gonna require sidewalks. We had, and then just on and on, the sidewalk issue has just been a, it, well, and I want to make sure that we don't find ourselves back into that, that they're optional again.
I'm not into that.
Because I don't want to go through that again.
Well, I, I agree and I agree with trustee White's points that there's special circumstances involved in this. It doesn't lead to anywhere. It doesn't have a multi-family development. So I would recommend that we send this back to the Plan Commission to look at the ordinance and have a public hearing on this. and have a public hearing on this and modify it, and the fact that we're not really trying to put cul-de-sacs in anymore, you know, the only time it would become an issue now is if we're in the same situation where we're, we had to reconstruct a road and for a cul-de-sac, so then I think amending the ordinance to address future issues would be appropriate. So my recommendation would, we've had discussion here, we've withdrawn the motion, so I would just like to see this remanded back to Plan Commission, see if we can amend the ordinance and have a public hearing to address it. Trustee White?
Mr. Chairman, what about, I know it's not a big issue, it's not a leafy issue, but the trees.
Well, the discrimination on the red maples has to all round up.
I'm sorry.
I think that's something that the Plan Commission should address too, I, you know, I've seen, you know, growing down our scene area, they've put all these trees between the sidewalk and the road and then all the sidewalks are all buckled up because the trees grow and they don't look what's gonna happen, you know, thirty, forty years down the road.
City of Wausau is a prime example, some of the older neighborhoods, curbs all...
I would much rather have it back on the property and give, I hate it, if there's specific issues with a tree, I don't like us telling people what kind of tree they can have, I just, to me, that's ridiculous, so I think that's, I think we should address both these issues with the Plan Commission and have a public hearing to address this and then we can bring it back to the board.
Yeah, I agree with, between the curbs and the sidewalks.
But this applies to trees that are taken down on private property in relation to the project, not necessarily trees that are in the right way, correct?
Yeah, so we offer replacement trees if, you know, because of grading and whatnot, excavation ends up getting taken down, at the Parks Works Committee meeting, committee members, Agami was an advocate for, similar to our subdivision code, we require a tree per lot be planted, so similar thing, but we wouldn't, I guess as staff, we wouldn't advocate in this instance to put it between the road and the sidewalk, we would want it on the private property side of the sidewalk. So then it was, do we want to donate those trees then to each resident or plant a tree for each resident, or do we stick to what we've done historically of just replacing trees if they've been taken down because of the project?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, everybody comfortable with discussion and remand this back to Plan Commission?
Yep.
Okay, all right, moving on to item forty-four, consideration of creating a Veterans Memorial Park, Patriot Park on the proposed Patriot Auto Site, corner of Mountain View and Schofield Avenue and thirty-seven oh two Schofield Avenue.
I think, is Jim still on?
I'm here.
Sorry it takes so long.
Not a problem.
Did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
All right, there's a lot of information on the packet as it relates to this, yeah, you know, first of all, I mean, I have nothing but tremendous respect for our veterans, but there's a lot of, a lot of issues here in having some of the stuff that was included in this packet, I guess, Jim, since you're on here, I'll give you a chance to kind of explain what you're, what you're trying to put together and propose and, so just go ahead.
Absolutely, okay, so back in August I met with the village staff, August of nineteen, I believe, looking at a lot of the corner here, Mountain View and Schofield Ave, have a proposed site plan here on page one sixty-eight of your packet, put that up, but the, basically what I was getting at is a veteran small business, the Schofield Ave corridor project, I don't know that it's finalized or approved yet, but from what I saw, this is an undeveloped vacant parcel.
It's actually an old cemetery.
I'd like to develop it in an attractive manner and I think Schofield Ave to help, you've got a good vision for it, but I'd like to work with the village staff board, et cetera, to put a good-looking building, looking similar to a tiny cellar, I don't know if the, I don't think the elevations are attached in the packet, the village staff has them, but, so the idea was to put a good-looking building there and then since this is a brand-new site, I wanted to put some kind of attraction to draw, make Schofield Ave look better, draw up more traffic to the small businesses in the area, and if you look on the site plan in the bottom right corner here, it'd be the southeast corner, I show a helicopter here, I thought was something similar to, I believe it's Alexander Park, near the Wausau Airport, has a Corsair that used to belong, was on loan to the VFW, I'm also a VFW post member and was involved with transferring that property to City of Wausau, so I'm a little bit familiar with that, when I talked to staff at this meeting in August, some of their concerns were, gosh, it would be great to have this within Memorial Park, but who's gonna maintain it, what are we gonna do with it, and I said, okay, so what if it's, what if the village only owns the ten square foot pedestal that the aircraft sits on, so there's no burden to the village, there's no grass to cut, I cut the grass around it, because the rest of the land is technically mine, and I'd be flexible with that, I want to work with the village if they would entertain the idea here of, you know, which, if they're interested in moving forward on this.
Excuse me, Jim, Jim, just pause, Oliver, can you take that tomorrow? Can you, he needs to be part of this?
I apologize.
And you are not social distancing and I don't know how long you're gonna keep on talking, but you are a distraction?
I apologize.
And why don't you give him a call tomorrow, I appreciate it, thank you. Jim, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you, so, again, I'd be willing to work with the village in any way to donate as much or little, you know, of that parcel as feasible, I think it'd be a good attraction, it would be a draw for the area, there's no Veterans Memorial Park in Weston, the only other ones that I know of in Marathon County are the Ball Diamond in Marathon, which really is just an old great kitty ball diamond, it's nothing nice, this, you know, we've got a lot of veterans in our community, we've got some veteran small businesses in the community that I don't think are recognized or pointed out, that's, you know, something we may put on our site or promote that in a different way, but I think it's to bring a lot of folks down to the area, Bricks is directly across the street or kitty corner across, the farmer's market is a block away, so there's a lot of families in the area, there's a lot of people in the area here, where you can kind of see on this site plan, it shows a cul-de-sac or a crosswalk in the Schofield Ave corridor plan, it shows an improved crosswalk with traffic signals for pedestrians that is slated to be installed there or planned to be installed there, so that would make it easier to access via pedestrians, you can see a guy have an ice cream cone across the street at Bricks and bring a family across to enjoy, you know, the aircraft on display, just some great thoughts or ideas from the village of that this is something they would be pursuing, I understand it's not free and there is risk involved, but no different than putting up a water tower or putting up a swing set or a traffic light.
All right, thanks for the information, Jim, we're gonna have trustees open up some questions and comments, Lauren?
I have a, I'm all in favor of a veterans park, however, when you read through this material, it talks about the cost borne by the village in obtaining the aircraft, maintaining the aircraft and returning the aircraft in the event the display of military aircraft was to be returned is beyond what the village is able to provide, particularly in its fiscally constrained times, to provide the funds necessary to obtain, maintain and return such items into the future is unknown, I suggest that a veterans park is a good idea and could provide for a monument at less cost in obtaining and maintaining same in relation to a display of a military aircraft, if you read through that, and there was a website that you got a link to that showed that an aircraft was struck, it cost six million dollars in damage, it's like, holy, baloney, that's a lot of money, not, I mean, I have veterans in my family, God bless them, but I think something similar to the memorial that we have in Kennedy Park, i.e. an eternal flame, that's, is more appropriate than an aircraft, it's just, wow, when I read through it, to obligate this community to, if it needs painting, the community has to, because an individual can't request this, it has to be an organization, veterans organization, service club, municipality to obtain this, they have to, they're obligated to paint it every so often, falls off the pedestal, gets damaged, or gets hit by a car, we still have things in, on Schofield Ave that are, such as those pylons, if somebody hits them, we're still responsible for them, replacing them, and I would hate to have some relic or heirloom get damaged and we can't replace it, first off, I don't think we have the money for it.
Mark? I guess my takeaway, my takeaway, I think the gesture is nice, I think the thought is nice, I guess my takeaway for a veteran, and the veterans parks that I've been to, I've often felt that they were quiet and there was a chance or a moment or time that you could reflect on what was done for you, what was done for your freedom, why I get to do the things I get to do because of these great veterans, and I don't see that opportunity here at this site, I see this site as retail, high traffic, you would actually better hope that people don't go get an ice cream cone or go to the farmer's market, because there's be no parking and there'd be no, I don't see benches there, I see, I would love to look at that helicopter or an airplane or a tank, I love looking at them when I go through communities, but I see them in spots where, you know, it's either at the Eagles or, I can't think of the...
VFW.
VFWs, you know, but, but, boy, if I would want to go, I mean, and I've gone to, I've been on bike rides and I really enjoy just sitting there and reflecting and having some quiet around me, and this would have absolutely no opportunity for it at all, I think it would look actually out of place, I understand your thought, Jim, and I get the whole patriotic, the Patriot Park with your business, but I would, I think it would be a little confusing, it would look retail to me, yet the community has to pay for it, and it's really a loan, it's not ours, and there's a tremendous amount of dollars to something like this, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it something, I just don't think this is the right spot, that's my opinion.
Okay, other comments, questions? Does anybody want to make a motion of any type?
Well, actually, I just want to see the end of this here, let me just get there.
You don't need a motion if you don't want to take any action.
I'm sorry, what?
You don't need a motion if you don't want to take any action.
Oh, oh, so, I see.
Okay, ask a second time, is anyone wanting to make a motion on this? Okay, no action to be taken, we'll move on to item forty-five.
So, let me, just on the parliamentary question?
Okay.
So by not taking action, that's, it's just the, we're not considering this request essentially, correct?
Is that the correct thing or is that just the easy way out? Because I don't want to leave this hanging there.
Well, the choice is not to make a motion or to make a motion that's either approves it and have it voted down?
Okay.
Or to make a motion to disallow and have it voted down or voted up. There's three choices.
To disallow, okay.
Well, no, well...
Is there a language right in the packet?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find here, hold on.
It says, I move to...
You know what, I didn't, I should have grabbed it and I'm not doing it, I'm sorry.
It's right on page one sixty-three.
Yeah, now I see it, I'm sorry, that's my fault for my inability here to work this thing.
Would you like the language, trustee?
No, it's right here, trustee Peeny.
No wonder you don't, you don't request it.
You gotta give me a little chance here, okay? All right, I, you know what, I'm not gonna try to sugarcoat this, I move to deny this request to be taken to the Parks and Recreation Committee and Plan Commission for further review.
Second? Motion by Maloney, second by Peeny, anything else on the question? Jim, I'm just gonna make a comment, while I agree that, I have nothing but unbelievable respect for our, for our veterans, that's not the issue, the issue is the location and really the burden on the taxpayers too, you know, it says the impact could be tens of thousands of dollars just to, in maintenance and, you know, to ship this, get it here, we would be responsible for it and as you read through the documentation from the military to get this, you know, only a municipality or a VFW or a service organization can request this, you have to maintain it to what the standards are then you get it in, so, the one quote I saw, they had to repaint the helicopter, it was twelve thousand dollars just to repaint it, and it doesn't include, you know, it said it was even challenging to try and even get parts and you have to have it in pristine conditions the way they give it to you, I don't think the location's appropriate and to me, there's not a layout for what you would really call a park for people to be able to sit, walk around, I don't think it really meets the definition of a park, I understand the sentiment behind it, couldn't agree more, but this is probably not the location for it and I have a difficult time calling it a park, I worry about the traffic congestion on Schofield Ave, there are people walking across, that's not, it's not, it's just not an appropriate location. All right, anything else on a question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. All right, item number forty-five, discussion on possible action on protocol for referring work requests to the village attorney, this is on, you know, I, there's been a lot of even staff and department directors, I just want to make sure that we have some criteria, this actually came up in even our Safer Board meeting as far as, you know, who can go to attorney, who can request information, and I think that, I don't think all the department heads should just be allowed to go to attorney, I think it should be funneled through the administrator for department heads and for the board, I think it should be limited to village president or the administrator unless something, an action is required from the entire board and we want the attorney to address a specific issue, looking through some of the bills and, I mean, the attorneys charging just for reading case brief, I don't know, was that requested?
Well, I've been hearing some stuff and I've been talking about this and then, you know, but I have a real big concern on the attorney and when I can't tell where it's coming from, I don't know if you were notified, I mean, I see a lot of origination from department heads and I just, I think it should be funneled, so that every time a contact is made, that contact, you should be notified, so either you can keep, I mean, it's something to go back to find out, I mean, I've seen some pretty wild stuff in there.
That is occurring, there's some things that are on that, in that report though that are from years prior even, that are still kind of not, you know, they're still unresolved, like the U-Haul, you know, the U-Haul situation over here, there's some ongoing things there, the SBA Towers case, you know, but the staff or the directors are going through me if they need to contact, they're making sure that it's okay or that we're on board with contacting the attorney.
Okay, it just, I just couldn't see a pattern in talking to others, it did come up in Safer last week and I think the protocol should be you and it should be the president or the whole board, and I agreed when it came up at the Safer, when it finally got there, because at there he only wanted the president only and then I thought the protocol should be you, the president and the whole board.
Yeah, we had the discussion with...
Or the whole board, I should say.
With two, you know, with two heads of the communities and they're gonna say only one person can ever contact the attorney, I didn't think that was fair, so that's kind of what led into this, I think there needs just to be guidelines so we can make sure that we've got some cost containment on legal bills that if it's staff, it should go through the administrator and if it's, if any of the trustees have an issue, bring it up at the board level and then we can direct it through a motion or at least through consent of most of the trustees that we would like attorney to address X, Y, and Z.
Can I, I also support, I also support what President Sparks remarks there, I personally... Can I, I also support, I also support what President Sparks remarks there, I personally think that if there's any staff that needs to obviously seek legal counsel's opinion on something, it should go through the administrator, and I think on the board level, I think it should be a decision by the board as a whole, if we were going to go, if we were going to seek the illegal opinion from the counsel, from the legal counsel, that's my personal opinion as well, just to obviously make sure there's some check and balance, and also some accountability as well.
Mark?
This brings up a point that, I don't know if you're aware of it, but I worked on the elected and appointed officials handbook for three months before I was voted out of office, which would have included some of these issues in it, like an owner's manual, how do I do this, and how do I do that? Because our ordinance is pretty sparse, it talks about, in fact, under our attorney, it's got two sentences, and that's it. And under the president, it doesn't say anything about the president being the only one. So if this needs to be done, you either have to do it through the ordinance, or have some sort of guidebook, and I'm more than willing to dig that back up, because I actually have to maintain keeping it current. And bring it up for discussion, chapter by chapter, yes, no, don't like this, add this, and that could be done, and it helps, it helped me a lot to write it, to learn about what is going on. Granted, nobody has all the time in the world to read stuff like I do, that's why I need classes. But at any rate, that's something that, because you and I know in law enforcement, that if it isn't written, it didn't happen, and I'm going to do everything I can outside of what's written. And I spent a lot of work, I don't know if you're aware of it, but I also was a major author of Employee Handbook, I don't know if you know that, I did, I spent a year on that. I've helped out, and I do know how to write, I wrote policy procedure for the EMPD for many years, and I think you know that.
I wrote it too.
And you wrote it too, and everybody that's been in the management position there has written, and, not to say that I'm an expert, or an attorney, but I've had a lot of experience writing it. So if we're going to do this, I think we need to take a look at the broader picture, not just this one issue.
I think this one issue is the one issue, I don't want more rules and regulations.
I know you don't, you made that statement.
I want to be voted in, and then I get to talk, and I don't want a manual.
There's nothing that says you.
We have enough to tell us what to do.
I understand you don't like the market, I really get that.
Oh, no, 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 not like.
You despise them.
I don't, no, I don't agree.
You don't agree with them?
That's not the role, that's not the role.
I understand that, I understand.
They have a guidebook for planning, and a guidebook for this, and a guidebook for that, that's not how this works.
I understand, it says there are things at the state level that require you to do certain things.
And I'm, and I agree with all that.
Which is.
But to have a novice come in and write a manual, I don't agree.
A novice, after twelve years, I'm a novice.
Where's, you have, I don't know what degrees you have in writing, other than spending a lot of time here doing it.
Thank you.
Which shouldn't have happened.
And what is your?
Which shouldn't have happened.
I'm, I'm done.
The administrator should have been here, the administrator should have been here, and you shouldn't have been here. That's what shouldn't have happened.
Well, I think, I think any policies, you know, it's up to staff, it's up to us as elected officials to lay out, to lay out the direction, and we set, you know, we set the broad definition, it's the staff should be drafting policies, if we're going to put anything together, it should be from staff. I know you put a lot of work into it, but it shouldn't be any of us as trustees to have to try and compile this information. It should flow through Keith, we, Keith, this is what we want to see, and then we bring it back through appropriate committees, we bring it back to the board, and, you know, we adopt whatever rules we're going to put in place, you know, like the handbook.
I do understand that, but also, I, the handbook I wrote for the employees was input from staff, also was vetted by council, and also vetted by personnel committee, so it's not like I wrote this and dragged this stuff out of thin air, I didn't. In fact, the manual is, some of it, most of it is drawn directly from the employee handbook, and I felt that at the time, if we're going to hold our staff and employees to a certain level, we should also have that same level.
By the state.
Not just by the state.
By the state.
By ourselves.
By the state.
So we have no governing policy for our trustees?
You've told me that we haven't even adopted Robert's Rules of Order.
We haven't.
What?
There is none.
I know we haven't.
Nope.
Yet we stayed at all the time. I think the state is enough for what our powers are.
I think, I think, yeah, the statutes lay out.
We just drill down, drill down, drill down, and then we're going to come in here, it'll be so scripted, nothing else will happen.
No, in fact, I despise Robert's Rules of Order, I think they're too constraining, and if anybody has taken the time to read them, all eleven hundred pages, which it took me a year to read it, there's a lot of stuff in there that's junk, absolute junk, and if, and if I condensed it down to thirty-two pages, adopting it, and having, granted, I just barely got out of college, Mark.
I didn't go to college.
But I've done a lot of work, and you can ask any staff member of the work that I've done with them, because I've asked them if they needed some help on things. Done a fairly good job for someone that barely got out of college.
So, what's our protocol on the attorney?
Let's, yeah, let's get back to what the agenda item is, which is, you know, process for going through the attorney. Would anybody like to make a motion on?
I would move that the administrator, the president, and the entire board can ask for help, service, or action from the attorney.
Second? Okay, motion by Maloney, second by Feeny.
Can I?
On the question, Mark?
I guess I would, and you may not like this, Mark, but I've seen it in the past, when you said all of the board.
Unanimous.
I guess it would have to be, we had, where we had board members that were constantly contacting the attorney.
That's my problem, as a single board member, calling the attorney on their own.
Okay, I thought that's what you were saying.
That is my problem.
The issue is, yeah.
That is exactly my problem, because I would never call the attorney unless I talked to administrator, or to President Sparks, or the assistant board.
Yeah, I guess that was.
But that has happened in the last couple of weeks.
Me?
Yes, you.
I didn't call him.
It shouldn't have been.
But there's nothing in our rules that says I can't.
That's why we're trying to establish that tonight.
I, you know, because, like I said, we had that, there was a couple of board members that were constantly calling the attorney.
It shouldn't be happening.
And it was decided at one point in time that it, that could happen unless they asked permission, you know, either from the board as a whole, or the president, or the administrator, but that they would be giving, you know, they just couldn't pick up the phone.
And that's, that's what this motion.
And the next, the next part of this is that the attorney would have to know this too, that they cannot put, take work on from that, they can't, unless it's those three components.
Right.
I would agree. I can't track it, I am, now it's going to be yours, you get to track it now.
I have a question.
It's a stinker.
Would this require a unanimous vote of the trustees, or could one person dissent and stop any action?
Does that happen on anything else?
I have no idea, it could happen.
Well, I mean, you normally are the one that knows that, not a dissenting.
It would have to be approved by the board, not by majority vote, or whatever.
Like everything else.
Correct, okay.
Or the, if you talk to the president, he could, he could give permission.
Oh, about the attorney, I'm thinking about the vote right now, I thought you were asking about that, you're saying for the attorney. Now, here's the, here's the safety part of this, so we don't have a good president, okay, majority of us can still go to the attorney, if we have a stinker in that vote.
Right, I understand that, but.
So that gives us the caveat.
Oh, that's what you were saying, yes.
Because that's also a possibility, if we.
I'm glad you clarified that, because you said all the trustees, to me that includes everybody would have to.
It could be four trustees against two trustees and the president, and then we get to go to the attorney.
Okay, that's different.
All in favor?
Very fair.
It's a majority.
The majority, it's just a majority vote.
Yep.
The president has one vote in the process. Okay, anything else on the question?
Is that, is that clearing the motion, or is that motion need to be amended? Clarified with the, it can be by majority vote of the board.
And I'm just refreshing my memory, I made the motion.
Sherri, can you read back the motion, please?
Maloney, Feeny, to approve that work requests go through either the administrator, and the president, or the entire board.
Okay.
So.
Lauren, help me get that off.
Majority.
I can, I have to.
You can amend your, you can amend your motion, then the second would have to be approved for your amendment.
Okay, I will amend each motion with the majority.
Okay.
Or to include the majority of the board, instead of entire board.
And I'll second that amendment.
Okay, now you vote on the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the amendment, on the amendment, all in favor say aye.
On the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, on the original amendment.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you everyone for your help.
All right, item number forty-six, consideration to sell point two-four-eight acres, a lot at seventy-five hundred Compass Circle, Field Crest Lot, number twenty-five.
Oh, there's a number, yeah, I was trying to find that.
Well, I have a question, so I don't know what.
Go ahead.
I'll let somebody.
On the questions, go ahead.
Okay, my question is, and I remember this subdivision going in, and that we needed this lot because the roads are not wide, they're narrower than the normal road, and they thought they needed this to store snow. But my question is, how can we sell it if it was given to us for this purpose?
We can't.
If anything, if we aren't using it for that purpose, does it not have to go back to the person that borrowed it?
Yes.
Yes.
It does, that's part of this report, unfortunately, I did not realize that when this first came up.
Oh, okay, because I had read somewhere in there too, but I, that was my thought, I had made a note that said, how can we do this?
I saw the same thing she did, but I didn't notice the answer.
It's on page one eighty-nine.
Do you have the answer?
It's attached, it should be attached.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't.
There's, okay, yeah, so the history of this was that it was originally a condominium plot, that's why the streets are narrow, there was narrow, there were shorter setbacks, and.
Well, there is, okay.
The original developers decided they didn't want to continue the condominium plot, so they converted it to a subdivision plot, so that's, the request for the snow storage lot was something we thought we were going to need, so if you look at the quitclaim deed that's attached, it's on page one hundred and eighty-nine, one hundred and ninety, thankfully. It's there.
Last but not least.
It's the conditions, the covenants by which the lot was conveyed to the village, so we have to use it for the purposes that we said we were going to use it for, and if we're not going to do that, and want to dispose of it, it needs to go back to the original owner. So there are three owners on this plot, from what, you know, if you look at the signatures on the subdivision plot, it was Paul and Dan Johnson, Anchor Bank, and I think it was another lending institution that's listed there, so.
Okay, I saw the Anchor Bank.
So the question now is, you know, if we, if this neighbor wanted to acquire the lot.
Was that twenty-six or twenty-four?
He's on the east, or the south side of the lot that we are, that we own.
So twenty-four?
Okay, by the pond there? There's a pond, like.
I believe it's the owner at lot, twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, we own lot twenty-five.
Got it.
Or we have lot twenty-five. So, I, I guess we can pursue the.
On one ninety is the picture.
We can pursue this, find out who the rightful owner is, and say, hey, we don't, we aren't going to use this anymore, then the owner, the neighbor wouldn't need to work with that.
Okay.
That entity to acquire the lot. I think, we did check the condition of it on Friday, and Dan Ruskowski went out, took some pictures, and it is, and it does need maintenance, we've not done maintenance on this over time, so we need to clean it up, if nothing else. So I guess the option would be, we either look into the sale of lot, or we just commit to taking care of our responsibility to keep it cleaned up.
So is there any, is there just scrub on it right now, is there any trees, or what?
Uh, no.
Snow filter, snow, snow storage should have been empty, but grass, right there.
I think there's some debris from construction on it.
Yeah, there's some rocks, and I think a little sand pile, and.
Well, without all this going on, and, and, yes, and probably shouldn't, that's probably the right way, should we just not clean it up, and then let the neighbors keep it from there, clean? I mean, then they don't have to buy it, I mean, they don't want to build on it, do they, or what?
Well.
Or maybe they do.
The person that contacted us was interested in acquiring it, so we can build a cash garage.
Ah, okay, okay.
But I think the owner of the north was also somewhat interested, maybe they would want us.
Split it.
Split it or something, I don't know.
Yeah, well technically, that's, it's not our role.
It's not our role.
And we either keep it, maintain it, or we turn it back to original owners, and then they can fight over it.
Right, and they can sell it if they want to.
We don't want to even be involved in those discussions, so.
It sounds like we did a deep research.
So what, yeah, so I was unable to contact the owner, or the neighbor that had made the request on Friday, I think just because of work schedules or whatever, and I didn't follow up over the weekend, I tried again today, but, I mean, I guess if you, if you want us to let, if you want me to check with him still, I can do that, and if he does not want to have us, you know, sell the lot back, or give it back to the original owner, I guess we would just decide we clean it up, and.
Well, if, if we can, I mean, I read through everything, I was, we can't use it to extend the road, which was the original purpose, it's not wide enough, so we've got a small, tiny lot that we can't really do anything with, but will require to maintain in perpetuity. So I think the correct decision is to turn it back to original owners, they can negotiate with the owner, with the two, and they can bid for it.
Yep.
And let them upkeep the property, but it serves no purpose, we're not using it for the intended purpose originally, which was, which was for storing snow, we've got a covenant here that requires us to maintain it, why would we maintain property that we can never develop, we can't sell, and all we can use it for is storing snow? I think it makes sense to just not even, you contact owners out of a courtesy and say, we're going to give the property back to the original owners, and you can buy it from them.
Yeah, because originally, like you said, that was the idea, that maybe that cul-de-sac could be extended, but those lots aren't big enough to even take some land to make it wider.
Right.
Because those lots are so small.
Yeah.
It is?
I think so.
Okay, it looks buildable.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's buildable.
I mean, if they ended up not selling it to the two, or one, and sold it as a lot, yeah.
Obviously, we missed it, wouldn't they?
Right.
They needed it to us because.
It's a pretty small lot, something.
But we can't sell it, so.
It's a very small lot.
We have to maintain it, so is anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to return the property to the prior owners.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Ermeling, second by Maloney, on the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number forty-seven, appoint Dan Higginbotham to the Extraterritorial Zoning Committee to replace Randy Christensen for the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one term. Just so you're aware, this is, this is, Milt Olson is putting Randy on this, it'll be at their town board meeting tomorrow night, so I guess.
It's just information?
It's, yeah, this is, it's the town's appointment, so this is just to update our records, but obviously it'll be, won't be effective until their town board meeting tomorrow night, when they make that appointment.
Okay.
Questions on that?